Mayor Manning?
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
Keel?
President.
Manahan?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
And Jones?
Here.
So we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looking for approval of bringing minutes from 10 to 2018?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion for special meeting minutes at 10:25?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're gonna start off with both of office for Ward 2, yes, the bathroom? And I think we'll do, let's come right, where do you want?
Don't ask me who's here.
We'll be right over here and then I think Teresa will get a picture by the side of your wall, but, so.
Stay here.
You can come on over here. Let me come on over here. Let's see, we'll go like this, right here. Now, Teresa or Larry, would it be best to just have her read this, or should I read it and have her read it?
I think she needs to read it because it's in her saying that she's taken that.
Okay, so, all right, ready to read again?
I'm Jessica Johnson, having been appointed to the House Councilperson Ward 2 within and for said City of Hartford, do solemnly spread that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge, ability, perform all duties at my said office, as counselperson Ward 2, as per acts by law.
Okay, yeah, congratulations.
Let's go sit up there.
I'll keep an eye.
They won't see her.
It's a big ask, we've gotta show you the whole city of Hartford.
I know.
All right, we will, um, maybe one thing I'll quick say is we've a lot on our agenda tonight, so, in the council, not all of these things will need discussion, some of them will, obviously, and we'll, we'll make sure we get as much discussion as we can within normal time, all of that, but, if you have some things on here that have great staff recommendations and you're ready to make a motion out of it, and, and we're not ready to beat the whole thing down, um, let's just move forward on some of them as we go through, so. Um, next item up is public comments, so, this will be separate from visitor section, but public comments, anybody in public wanna speak on any knowledge of that? I hear none. The next up, we have Dave Openhour under the living section.
Just a question, why shouldn't we put a heat pump in the, uh, it's like an air-conditioned heat pump, right on the sidewalk there by that little hand ramp, there's a chimney shaft right there, and probably on the backside of the building, on the north side of the building, it's over 120 feet, and we can't pump it that far. So, that leaves me one little option, might be basically that one.
So that would be in the, it's in the right of way. I wanted to do a question earlier, I don't wanna take a turn, but, that's stairwell.
Yeah, I mean, if that's right of way, is stairwell being in the right of way?
If stairwell is in the right of way, but, you know, that was put in way back when, you know, when grandfathered in, so. Yeah, because the building comes right up to the property line. And there is a railing around the stairwell, so this would be on the west side of it, you know, obviously, they wouldn't be able to walk on the sidewalk because of the stairwell and railing there where it's gonna be, but that is right of way.
You would always jump past the railing a little bit.
No, maybe you'll see in the picture, it comes up, it's 18 inches, well, the handle comes up at 42, so.
That's air-conditioned, yeah.
And that's for your basement door?
No, that's for the floor.
For the?
The tile floor.
Maybe consensus, Teresa, or motion?
I have, like, a motion, so then?
Uh, tell me again why it can't go on the north side of the property?
Because it goes over 120 feet, there's no way to get the vacuum pipe in there.
The building is only 42 feet wide, though, from north to south.
Mm-hmm, but you have to shoot up, and come over across the top, and come back down here, you're probably going to want that as a part of your building to see it, you got metal walls in the middle that are two feet thick, too, you just can't punch holes in them, they're structural walls. All the bigger air-conditioning units and stuff, and this type unit, it sits inside the house, uh, inside the place of the apartment, it sits on the wall, so, just the right opportunity, right out, right into that little.
This proportion, the floral shop here, and that, is gonna be, it's on that next level up, right?
That's where the bank was.
Where the bank was?
Yeah.
And roof forms, no, no?
No, because it won't work, um, it won't function up there, um, just because it's in direct heat, this style. Because that's what I suggested, I just said it won't work out. It won't work on that, on the roof, no, it's just in direct heat, but, the elements on this. Did, did he say, no, he didn't, sorry. Yeah.
I don't understand the difference between it being on the roof and being on the sidewalk.
I don't either, other than it's out of the north wind, it's, I'm not sure how the insurance works, I'm not an electrician, I'm not plumber, I'm not, you know, I can't interact with it.
Probably why I seem a little bit suspect is because I am an electrician, so I get that. I just was, I see a lot of crazy stuff, things that can't be done sometimes, just need a second opinion. Not from an electrician, but from an HPAC contractor. In the grand scheme of things, though, what's, it's a small heat pump, sitting behind a railing, I don't even know what harm does it, what harm does it create? Full disclosure, it's a small ask on Dave's part, but I think there's been a lot of asks on the city's part, that they've met with a lot of resistance, and, we'd like to see that project get to the finish line, but that takes, you know, definitely takes some cooperation. It's a lot further along than it was prior to your time. Might tell you, it'd be sitting here, or it's by time, sitting on planes, or?
Probably both, because I remember when it was about two weeks away from being a pile of rocks.
Well, I've been there, I've been here for all of that, Mark, so we don't need to hash up a bunch of history.
I'm just asking for a game, man. I mean, we got benches that sit out here from the city citizens, that are far bigger.
They make a lot less noise, too.
This you want here, it's a lot less quieter than the grain all day.
So we'll throw up pretty heat?
I didn't ask that question, I can answer that, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the AC unit, what's the physical address again?
101 North Maine.
101 North Maine, as specified in it.
As specified.
Huh? Got a motion in a second? Aye, in seconds. Discussion?
Yeah, I got one question, are you gonna build anything around that, Dave, or just have it just sitting there wide open?
Well, I suppose I could build something around it, now, they said it's very, very quiet.
No, I'm not worried about the noise, I'm more worried about somebody vandalizing it than, you know.
True that, but, no, I think the word's getting out that a camera's attached to everything.
Yep.
How's this different than anything else being built outside of?
Outside of property, yes, I know what you're going with it.
We've been down this road together.
In principle, nothing is different.
Situations, and. Stepped our ground that it ain't supposed to be there. Just for this, or the people?
And for the record, the reason I'm, uh, making this motion is because of the fact that the stairway is there as a deterrent, if that stairway wasn't there, I wouldn't make this motion.
See, and I agree with you, I think that stairway's, it's there, it's been there, been there forever, it's grandfathered in, it's, this is tucked in right next to it, even if it was in a different, even if it was down the street, I think it may be a little different than how it is now, so. Further discussion? Vote?
Before you vote, I just wanna say thank you for your time, it's very exciting.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
No.
Brennaman?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Yep.
You got a real one on the way.
It's all right, it's okay, it's all cash, you know.
All right, next we'll move on to the events, this is our motion, applications appearing, so we've got special event application for hometown Christmas, December 2nd, 2018, I noticed they had something up here, Lisa, I imagine you're representing hometown Christmas?
So basically, the, the application's pretty much the same, as previous years, the main difference is we just asked for a few more street closures during the frame time, um, that was kind of the suggestion of, you know, with the city, just to prevent the congestion and get the craziness not to be handled a little more efficiently, so, basically, the difference from years past, that's the main difference, attach the scheduled events, again, just a few location changes, but as far as on the city's standpoint, we're asking for the street closures, um, that are noted on there, use of the city maintenance building for the registration, mark in the streets for the 5K, we'll mark them, but, just the permission to mark them, and then the fireworks again along stairwell street.
Discussion, questions?
Well, so, um, changes this year from last year, you probably said it, but, uh, change venue a little bit here?
Some of the venues have changed a little bit, we're not using the elementary school any longer, so, uh, everything will, the, most of the activities will be at the high school, so the horses and the wagons will travel a longer distance, they'll come from Main Street here to the high school and back, and then we're hoping that we still have the city bus and the tractor that will take them on the routes to the fire station and back, so.
Oh, shit.
So we're eliminating the elementary school, basically, that's the main thing.
Motion approved, special events application for hometown Christmas committee, striking fee.
Discussion? Manahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Number your report on. All right, special event application, grand opening for Buffalo Ridge Bar &amp; Company, from 10 to 18, I bet you're here to speak on that?
Yes. Apologize for my attire.
You better work with your butt up.
We're, uh, we're trying to keep going.
Um, I'll tell you what, if you could, maybe just give us a little bit, a little bit of background on what you're planning that night, and.
Yep.
I'll, I'll just kinda jump right to it, um, one of the things that we need to close off the street, but we don't have enough time to be able to approve alcohol in the streets.
Okay, yep.
And so, I think one of the major questions that's gonna be is, do you have a plan, if we were to close that street off, to be able to keep the alcohol on your property while people walk to food trucks, things like that, so.
Yeah.
That's probably the question, just to jump in.
Okay, so our plan is to post in multiple locations that alcohol has to remain on the premise, premises, so. Um, and we'll, we have additional help that'll be around, we're gonna try to have somebody that's out in that area, you know, reminding people that, hey, you can just walk out, grab your food, but you gotta bring it inside, if you're gonna have a, have a peer, so. Um, the, the main, the main thing is, we're trying to avoid any congestion on Main Street by parking those food trucks there, we thought if we cut that little chunk of street from First Street, well, from Main to that alley, that, you know, we could avoid some of that, but, um, but, you know, that's, I guess that was our plan, was to post, post the signs, and then try to have somebody out there to monitor as best we can.
Sure, okay. Any other things as, as it goes to your special event application, anything else, high points you have to cover?
No, no, really, we just wanted to line up food trucks out there, one of them's a 40-foot truck, um, they do barbecue, so I think he has a truck and a trailer, it's a total, he's 40, 40 feet, I believe, um, but, yeah, we're just, we're trying to squeeze a little more space and not, again, cause too much conflict with traffic flow coming down Main, and we also don't wanna lose any parking spots there, if we put it in front of the building, and, uh, you know, there's gonna be a couple new stations, I believe, out there, so, you know, we wanna leave the front of the building open, so. That's, you know, kind of just that, we'll, if it's from 2 to 11, um, we'll probably, the food trucks will be gone, you know, before that 11 o'clock hour, but.
Sure. How many food trucks?
Three.
Three.
Um, two will be there, kinda at coinciding times, and then one will pull off, and then the other one'll kinda fill in, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we just don't know what to expect either for traffic or for attendance, so.
Right.
This is kinda the option we're looking for.
My apologies, uh, you, where did you say you wanted, you planned on putting the food trucks?
Right between, from, uh, fir, the corner of, uh, First and Main, and then back to the alley that's to the east of us.
Okay.
Just that little portion.
Not towards Mr. Openhour?
No.
It's the other way.
Nope, back east, so across from the elevators, open slot there.
Okay.
Teresa, just for my own sanity, those special event applications aren't in our package, correct?
I gave you emails and updated package today, they weren't originally consistent, come in till Monday, and I emailed you. Did you get the email today with updated package? The updated package should be in your box, though, too. Because I loaded it on there, so the packet in your box, should have.
Good idea. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have them?
Special event application.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion, questions? Fifty hours, any, any comment on that?
No, I think that's probably good, and you said, you know, we'll try to keep everybody there, this is a really good exercise in that, uh, we will keep everybody there, and better to ask for forgiveness and permission, I, I guess, is my theory on it, is, uh, you know, this is your diving into this kind of business, so.
Yeah.
You know, the boundaries are met, like I said, most of the time, you're not gonna have problems with law enforcement, at the time, we'll come in and we'll check things out, make sure everything's there, you have a problem, let us know.
Okay.
All, all the other places in town, they have my personal number if they got questions, um, you know, this type of event, or what my suggestions are, and just kinda let know, you know, so I can let the captain know if there's a special event, if we think there's gonna be a large drought, you know, not so we can get 85 cops in town to arrest everybody, just to make sure that someone's available for a call.
Yep.
So that's kinda what happens, so, but, yeah, it's a good test, as far as, you know, not getting here in time, not getting the street restriction, it is your responsibility to, you know, let's, let's draw some boundaries and let's enforce those boundaries, and then, when you do get to close it down and open up that street, that's just one more thing, but you still gonna have boundaries, that you're gonna have to watch for, you're going down the street, or, and you guys are off sale, too, correct?
Yes.
So that'll be something, um, I, I guess I have a question, is, is that off sale until midnight, or until 2, or?
That, I'm not 100% positive, I can find out.
I, I'm just, I'm just curious.
We won't be open until 2, our hours are, um, until 11 o'clock on Saturday, and then Thursday, Friday, we're open till 10:30, I believe, 10 to 10:30, so.
I was just curious about the off sale.
Yeah.
When it happens, and I, I'm not sure on the hours on that, you know, when the bar closes, and we've got a bunch of people walking down the street with tall packs, and, great for you.
Yeah.
I just don't know, and, and really, it's not that much of a problem with me, it's just whether or not someone in the community complains.
Yeah.
And it could be addressed, but if you guys are closing at that time, it's not a.
Yeah.
An issue.
Yeah, and right now, all we, they could be able to buy would be a growler, so we don't have any can, any kind of canning.
Oh, no canning, bottling, or canning, so it'd be, you know, taking home a growler.
Yeah, taking home a growler.
Cool, and like I said, any questions or concerns, or ideas, or something, if you wanna run them by me, I can give you my, all of those, but, uh, you know, lifetime in the bar business and 28 years of law enforcement, so.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet.
All right, any, any other thoughts? All right, we got a motion and a second on the table. So we have further discussion, we'll vote. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Nancy? Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
And Manahan?
Yeah. All right.
Congratulations, you guys, good to see you getting over.
Yeah, thanks, guys, I truly appreciate it.
All right, next up, we got first reading, more than 659, to amend the city's fines and fees ordinance, this has got pretty good layouts in there, um, packed it, but, can we do a recap of this?
Yep, so, currently, we have ordinance 605 on our books, which sets our fines and fees of what we charge for different things throughout the city, um, at last planning and zoning meeting, the planning and zoning are recommending increasing our fee for what we charge for water and sewer hookups, currently, we're at $500 for a water hookup, $500 for a sewer, they would like to recommend increasing that to 750, so, I was going in to change that amount on this ordinance, and I got to looking through all the amounts, and there's a few other things that need updating, um, just for the fact, like, our swimming pool passes, you know, this was originally adopted in 16, the state has since changed the tax rate, so we have to change the tax amount on what we charge. The city also, the council made a motion to increase our pool pass fee, so that needed to change to what the motion is. Same thing with, um, on and off sale beverage license, that state fee changed, too, with all their changes this year. And then the last one was, um, what we charge for a special city council meeting, if somebody, a resident wants to call one, since your salaries increased, that fee increased, so, not only would this increase the, um, water and sewer hookup fees, but the ones shown in red, the ones I just went over, it would change those to the correct amounts from past city council motions, so.
I make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 659.
Second. Discussion? You're none? Manahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right, we got the sheriff's that need to report.
Okay, busy October, we had 280 calls for service, 46 of those were traffic, uh, stops, traffic violations, I think we've contributed to that. I attribute that to, we've got, uh, two guys on field training right now, so they're in order to get up to snow, they do, they're pretty aggressive as far as pulling vehicles over, I see there's a lot of Highway 38 van mark, that just, that means that they're running Highway 38 van mark, pretty hot, that's always a honey hole, it's been there forever, but, uh, also Mickelson, I see there's quite a couple, you know, we, we have been getting complaints on Mickelson constantly, so, that's, um, they're, they're running that area pretty hot now, too, so. Something that we do, I, I haven't talked about this yet, but sex offender registrations, um, they're required to check in with, uh, an officer in Sioux Falls, that's, uh, responsible for all the sex offenders in Minnetonka County, they have to register or check in twice a year, if they change an address, they have to immediately notify, um, and one thing the sheriff's office does is we actually do a site verification, so we make contact with any sex offender that's in the community, in the communities of Minnetonka County, verify they're there, um, we don't just knock and have, you know, whoever say, yeah, they live there, we actually have to physically see them there, talk to them, how are things going, got a piece of mail for us, believe it or not, some people try to, you know, if we check 10 times and they're not there, and we do it on the block, then we start getting suspicious on whether they're actually living there, and what, some of the problems we're running to is they'll have another residence that somebody lives at, that they're living at, that is actually in a restricted zone, so they go and they have an address somewhere else, on paper, but they don't actually live there, so that's one of the things that we do, is we verify that they're there, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that or not, and if anybody's curious on what the sex, if there's sex offenders in the community, you can go on the, uh, South Dakota website, and there'll be little arrows or dots or markers on where those are located with charges and history, so. Dealing with a lot of juvenile issues, school issues, helping out Jenny this month, getting some of those tied up, um, and we had some ideas, some of this is still happening in the park, um, after school, meet you at the park type of confrontations, so, what we've been doing in the, it's kinda started this year, is the Sioux Falls Police Department started doing trespass forms, so if they had someone that was being disruptive in a business, constantly going in there, or was on, you know, just basically causing a problem, we've been doing this called trespass forms, we'll inform them with a piece of paper, the owner bills off this cover sheet, we serve them, say you come back, you're gonna be arrested for trespassing, um, had a discussion with Teresa on whether or not, you know, parks are public property, but, they're also public property, with, we can decide on what we need to do with them, as far as if somebody causes a problem, I think there was a couple situations at the beginning of the summer, where we could actually serve a trespass form on some people that were causing problems, and it would eliminate, um, them being in the park for the rest of the summer. The vandalism's that are occurring, if we actually do find out we did it, it would be nice to give a piece of paper to them, with their parents and years, saying if they show up at the park, or they're at the park, they automatically get a trespass, and then we need to decide if we're gonna have a city ordinance fine for trespass, that we could fine them up, or. I would rather do that, I think that would have more teeth to it than, um, arresting someone for trespass and trying to get a juvenile court system to do anything with a trespass, so that would be something that, like I said, we're in winter time now, it's a good time to discuss this before next summer, just kinda get it out there, I think we, we took some strides this year with locking the bathrooms, and that kinda cut down on the vandalism.
I know, yeah.
Now, we've got the same kid, and I don't mind him being. Now we've got the same kid and I don't mind him being there. That's, you know, it's a good place for them to be and they got to be somewhere, but if they don't respect the property and they're going to cause a disturbance and make it a place where nobody else wants to spend time, then they don't need to be there. And like I said, I did a little bit of research and it looks like we can actually, from what I've been reading, it's possible that we can tell people or, you know, council can, you know, enact this type of ordinance or if they're served, that they won't have to stay. And that gets tracked through, if an officer comes into contact with them, they'll run their name. There will actually be a marker on their file that says that whatever administrative sanctions, I guess, if you want to call them, will be on that file. So they pull the name up. Boom, it'll pop up. Yeah, you can't be here. Here's your citation for trespass. Hundred dollar fine, fifty dollar fine, you know, whatever. We would just need more ordinance?
I think so. Currently, we don't have an ordinance to address that and, you know, we do have hours for the park, but we don't address whether trespassing or we have a loitering ordinance that I found, but you know, that's what people do in parks that are around, so you know, I don't think it'd fall into, I don't think it'd fall into that. Yeah, it'd have to be a trespassing, so I think we'd have to enact a type of ordinance. If you guys want to do that.
Kind of like one of those things, you've lost your right to publicly be there and
Yeah, something like that.
And I think you could put any city property. So if we have a problem with the, you know, somebody's creeping around the pool, we can't really get anything on. And we can serve a trespass on them or if they've been disorderly, you know, it could be something as simple as, you know, some of the businesses, it might be a little, I guess easier to wrap your head around a private business where somebody comes in, becomes disorderly, they don't have any reason to be there, we'll serve a trespass on them. And they don't show up or they get arrested. And they know that there's a piece of paper that says so and it's documented. And, you know, and that could be documented through a case report of like a vandalism. And then, you know, the next day, Hartford City Officer can look and say, hey, there's a smoking vandalism, trying to burn the bathrooms down. These are the kids that are involved. I'll go there the next day, talk to the parents, okay, it is a trespass forms. They're not allowed to be there anymore.
But this is an ordinance that we could adopt, not just for the park, for the city.
I'd say any city property. I've looked at the whole thing.
Just for the business too, because right now the businesses can't do that because we don't have an ordinance.
No, like we can do it, but we do it more on an arrest because we're probably dealing with adults or I'm kind of gearing this towards kids. I mean, it could transfer over to adults, but if I got some creeper in town that's hanging around the pool and I'm just going to arrest him on the same charge. If it's dealing with kids, I would like to have some kind of fine schedule.
Teresa, can you work with Deputy Elbers and bring us a recommendation at our first meeting in December?
Can we do that?
Good point. And this derived from where again? I mean, this, I thought, the deaf guy.
Well, I just, we've been doing it for businesses. And I thought maybe that it would apply to the parks. I just kind of figured that, you know. You know, you think it's public, but then again, it's like, well, not really. If it's, you know, you're causing disturbance or you've lost your rights. And like I said, it could blanket all city property, you know, because we've got tons of city property found that people shouldn't have access to. If we got someone hanging around out there, I can serve the trespass on them and that, more likely in that situation after they get served a trespass, they're not going to go come back.
Is this like disruptions and vandalism or just?
Yeah, I think they've tried to light the bathrooms on fire three times this year. So we've done three vandalism attacks. They all went to fire. I think I got that's, he's gonna have to grow up a little bit.
Do you find that it's like certain hours of the day?
Well, it's, yeah, it's
I mean
after curfew. You know, it seems to be when the kids probably should be home anyway.
Yeah, I avoid going to the park with my kids.
That's what we're trying to fix.
Because it's, it's very disruptive. There's big kids running around. Then I think maybe they're there because there's no one at home, you know, to go home to, you know. So it's like, it's hard if you want to take them, but at the same time, kind of be safe about it, you know.
Right.
So yeah.
But no, that was the part, and we started this summer of, you know, kind of trying to get rid of this where got rid of the skate park. That was a big magnet for problems. So we got rid of that. That kind of kept the out of town stuff from coming to Hartford. And then, but now we're dealing with our local. They're our kids. We just need to make sure that they're behaving. You know, maybe they get served the trespass or the threat. Even though this, this is where we're going with this. Unless you guys knock it off, you're not going to be able to come here. So, and part of that is being disruptive too. Any questions for me?
Counselor, last thing, any, any issues you can see with that at all?
I'd like to see the draft ordinance and I'll tell you if I see anything, but I think I understand the concept.
Gotcha. Cool.
Saw you out in Halloween, handout candy, that's good.
Yeah.
First saw you pull up on the street and I thought, okay, I should call the cops, but then said, yeah, handout candy, that's good.
We did have the, the white van incident. I don't know if anybody heard that at all.
Heard about a white van.
It's Halloween. Well, a guy has a white van and parked it in front of somebody's house to go have a get together. And the guy that lived in the house put the free candy sign on the window. And we've already had issues of white, and like I said, the issues weren't validated. But it was kind of funny that it was in the community and somebody actually be clever enough to put a sign on it. But as, as I walked to the van, he said, I'd like you to take that down on me, please. That would save me a couple calls, but anyway, hey, it's Halloween. That was funny. All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, next we have a couple of new documents, engineer report, some pay applications, all those things. All right. Did you cover any high points on there? Anything you think, direction, want to make sure the council holds proud to?
John, do you want to start off?
I can.
Council, I'm John Brown, with the new councilman person. I work with Ross and Mitch. We are currently working on a, a plan to annex and potentially acquire some easements along the corridor east of Hartford to establish possibly a alignment and a route for a trunk sewer and a possible treatment facility. We're progressing really well with that. I, I think we emailed out a report that we put together last week or late last week, just to kind of give you a summary of where you're at, where we're at. We've been meeting with the property owners along the corridor and trying to meet some of their requests and goals. And at this point, we really are, really at a, kind of a midpoint in the process. We need to develop relationships with each of those property owners so that we can gain some trust and some support for the overall project. And that's where we're at with, within the process. It's still going to take some time, but we're progressing, I feel, quite well. And at this point, you know, we really don't have anything secured. We do have draft documents in front of all property owners to at least consider. And some are a little bit further along in their understanding of that than others. But at this point, we're just progressing along and I still anticipate this taking some time. Don't know how long that's going to be. We had originally estimated this to take approximately a year when we started it. I don't think it'll take quite that long, but I think we'll have things wrapped up sometime in February or March is where I'm anticipating. So I'm glad to answer any questions. I don't hope we want to get into any specifics at this point. But I'm glad to answer any questions. And if you have any questions afterwards, certainly then reach out to me and I could talk to you about it on the phone as well.
You mentioned that the landlords have a draft document to consider.
There are, at the time, there are three documents that we've prepared. We had Larry help us prepare that, document those documents. And those are a pre-annexation agreement, a, an agreement between you and the property owner and a draft easement document.
Yeah, so this is basically just research at this point?
Well, it's actually, no, it's actually in the process of acquiring, trying to acquire an alignment and potentially easement documents all the way through.
And those don't cost us nothing?
Well, it's certainly costing us, you know, our time first of all. I mean, as far as nothing goes. At this point, you know, we've asked for dedication of the permanent easement area. As far as a location for a facility, we certainly understand that's not going to be dedicated. So that's kind of what we're working on. So can I answer your question?
A little bit.
On the, on the alignment of the corridor?
Cause I guess I'm not sure.
We're anticipating a dedication, which would be gifted.
But we haven't really said that we're going out there for sure.
No, and, and the reason we're getting basically an agreement in place advances and that's just what that is. It's just a
Right.
So you can exercise, you can exercise then if you'd like.
Right.
Exactly. That's why we did the three different documents. So it's an agreement in place so that as we move forward in the next two to five years, when we are in a position where we need to expand our facility at some point. And, you know, this was our, I would say our long-term goal would be to get to this farther east of town. And if we, if we run short of that, you know, we have other alternatives that we could exercise with our existing site, as we discussed earlier, this discussion is. So, and maybe we end up short. Maybe we don't go all the way that, that far with some other option. You're exactly, so it was, the first document, one of the documents is just an agreement so that we can exercise that annexation and easement document in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
Is the annexation meeting with some resistance?
Yes, we, we have had a little bit of resistance from a couple of them. And so as a result of that, we've asked Larry to clarify a couple of things on what they call flight pole annexation. And he's made it pretty clear that there's, there's been a case out there that actually has in Rapid City that they tried to fly pole annexation, so basically a real skinny strip of land. And we need to make sure we avoid that. That's certainly our intention is not to be a flight pole annexation attempt. We are, we're going to make sure that we're trying, that we annex a larger portion of that so it doesn't appear to be a flight pole. That'd be the only thing. There are two property owners that don't want to necessarily be annexed, even though there, there is not a financial change in their tax if we did.
All right, thank you. Questions, please, John?
All right, boss. The next item on our engineer's report is the Vandermark Avenue Sewer Extension Project. Work on that is going well. The sewer work is complete. Traveler Road is back in place. There's still some additional restoration work to go on that. And they have some testing yet to do on the sewer. But otherwise, the majority of that project is complete. And we have the first pay application to done it for one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, forty-three cents. Attached. Just to consider.
You have a question on that project. The intersection of Ninth and Vandermark. You know, they did a pretty good job repairing Vandermark, but east, west and south of that intersection is pretty beat up in construction. Do they not need to add any gravel there to kind of clean that up?
Yeah.
Even in the middle of the intersection, I'm not real impressed, but.
Yeah, that's going to be one of the items that is going to be on our punch list. They need to add some more gravel just to kind of clean, clean things up and then do some additional grading of that gravel both north of the project and south of the project.
Eastern wise?
Oh, yeah, east and west of Ninth.
Both sides, I mean, that whole intersection is tore up in the construction project.
Yeah.
Didn't know if they were required to do that or we, you know, missed it or didn't think about it?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Do you want to take these one at a time? So I make a motion to approve first pay request application one for Duninnick for one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six seventy-four, forty-three for the Vandermark Sewer Project.
Second. Motion second. None?
No vote?
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson? Nelson?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Next item is the Vandermark Roadway Improvement Project. We're still working on the design of that project. We'll be developing construction documents over the winter. Any questions on that project?
No?
Okay.
No?
And I'll move down to the Swenson Park Sports Complex Greeting. Project was substantially completed on time by the October nineteenth deadline. There's still some punch list items that need to be worked on. One of the items that was completed recently was the mulching of the site. They brought out straw mulch and incorporated that into the top soil to stabilize the site over the winter. The contractor sent us a request to push the seeding into the spring. The seeding contractor wasn't comfortable with dormant seeding based on, you know, weather conditions and, you know, they don't know what the winter is going to bring. I think their main concern was that if we have a freeze thaw winter, a lot of that seed will get washed down and all end up in the ditches and we won't have very good product. So, you know, we, we allowed them to move forward with that plan, I guess, so they mulched the site just stabilize it and then they're going to come back in the spring and seed. And along with that, there's going to be some restoration work that needs to be done before they seed. I know that some of the top soil out there was still kind of clumpy and there was some, you know, dip ridges that need to be smoothed out. So that work takes place in the spring before they seed. One other thing I want to add, Mitch met with the sports complex committee or a few members of it to go over some of the grading, you know, answer some questions on that that were brought up in one of the previous council meetings. And then we're also going to be attending the next sports complex committee, which I believe is on Sunday to start answering a few more questions for the whole committee and then helping out with budget items for our future projects. And then I also have the fourth pay application for fifty-nine thousand, interim seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion to approve pay application number four to our muster engine excavation for fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Second.
Is this the final payment?
No.
Okay.
We'll have at least one more in the spring after they finish the seeding work. There may be another one between now and then to just, if, if they're out there doing any more work on some of the punch list items that need to be completed.
Okay. I can't remember that far back, but when we first voted on this, usually there's a deadline on when it's to be completed. When, what was that date? Do you recall?
October nineteenth.
Okay. I heard you say that there were some clumps and stuff that needed to be addressed. Is that something that, that comes into play here as far as, I mean, you're saying it's never been done by October nineteenth, but yet you're saying it's not done. So I'm a little confused.
We have a substantial completion date of October nineteenth. Typically, you know, on a grading project, you know, if the site is able to be used as intended, you know, that would be kind of a substantial completion date. Because they were done with all the grading work and all they have left is the seeding and whether they seeded now versus in the spring. The seed's still not going to come off until the spring. So we would typically consider that a substantial completion.
I kind of disagree with you a little bit here. I mean, you know, I just have a point of concern in the fact that, it's my opinion, I could be wrong. But it's a heck of a lot better to get that seed in the ground before the snow and the bed because of the nitrogen that's going to be taking place. John, go. John, go.
Yep.
Like, so, so I'm just, you know, I mean, in my opinion, it should have been, you've readied by October nineteenth and seeded on October twentieth.
First of all, I guess, just maybe I could elaborate a little bit on the seed window. When we get into a later season seeding, we basically have two growing seasons in the spring, one in the spring and one in the fall. We get beyond those seed windows, which in the fall is September fifteenth. So we go beyond that September fifteenth, we're in a sense outside that seed window. We basically put the contractor on notice that if they want to seed, a dormant seed in the fall of the year, they certainly can do that, but that's at their own risk. So they risk losing any seed from wind erosion, any seed that wouldn't germinate, wouldn't grow, anything like that, they risk that, it's not us. And so we want to, wanted to make sure that you're aware that, that we can't force them to do that. If we did force them to do that, we take on some responsibility of that seed not taking place and not necessarily securing itself or having enough growth in that. And so because of that, basically the contractor's saying he's gonna come back in the spring and seed that, he feels he's gonna have a better stand by doing that. And so, I, I don't disagree with you, you know, probably seven times out of ten, you'll probably have a better product if you dormant seed in the fall, but I, we, we don't want to take on that risk for the contractor, in my opinion. And that's really what you're doing by allowing them, if, if we force them to seed it, we take on that risk of, let's say we have an open winter, we don't get any snow, and that, that wind and, and the drainage and it roads away, and we've got all these streaks out there and we have all these bare spots, that's on us then.
And I agree, and as you well know the history of this, of that, of the complex right now, we've had, we had, you know, drilled twice.
Yeah.
You know, to get, get the job done, and it took almost four years, honestly, to get it playable, and so that was my concern.
Yeah.
You know, and, and just to, you know, make sure that nothing else in the council knows that, that this, you know, is a big thing because of the fact that we have soccer moms out there that want that sort of stuff taken care of yesterday.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that. I think, I think from an expectation standpoint, this is seed, it isn't like we're putting sod down and we don't have an irrigation system. I think the reality is, we gotta know, we gotta understand that from an expectation standpoint, if we had an irrigation system and we had a very vigorous overseed and fertilizer program, I think you could accomplish maybe what you're, you're looking for there. So maybe our expectations need to be somewhat in line with what we're providing, which is a seed and with no irrigation system out there. So I feel like we actually, I felt like we had a very good catch on the first round, and I know you guys had a lot of pushback on that, but when you think about how much, what it takes to fill in those areas without an irrigation system and with not a lot of, I'll call it fertilizer and whatnot placed at the right times, we did have a, you know, the, the grass got mowed a little too short at one of those times, that stunned it a little bit, so I think we gotta, we gotta keep those in line.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't mean to.
That's fine, and I know, I know we want to keep moving here, but I, I want, John, since you're here, I've mentioned Mitch, I've mentioned him before, working with Corey Boran from, from Boran, what was his last name?
Borgen.
Borgen?
Borgen.
Thank you, Borgen. With Southeast Tech, have you ever done that before? Have you ever had a cooperative effort?
Yep.
Okay. That experience, good, bad?
Not on seed, I haven't.
Okay.
I, I guess, you know, you know, I don't know what the request is in regards to that, I mean, we'd certainly sit down and talk to him about it. And I, my understanding is Ross and Mitch did?
David Block from our office.
Yeah, we are. So I think we sat down with him and kind of went through that, and in, in this regard, you know, when we, if we would take on that cooperative joint effort there, we're really removing the risk away from the contractor.
Okay.
So keep that in mind.
We got a motion in a second for a pay application.
Sorry.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds on grass here.
Long observation, if you scroll down, I don't know where you're at in your box, but there's about four letters that discuss this.
Yeah.
And, man, it seems like we're actually saving the city some money.
I understand where you're coming from.
Can I ask one more question here? How many days, did they get any days relieved because of the wet weather?
Um, no, we didn't.
Okay, and they still made it by October nineteenth and they didn't ask for any days relieved? That's all we need to know.
Further discussion? Brown?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Hahn?
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mickelson Road Project, the second phase of that portion was the pavement, storm sewer and restoration down to kind of what the curve of the road is. Substantial completion was reached on that portion. I'm still doing an inspection and developing a punch list that I need to work on, a few items are left on that portion. But the road is open now up to just past four sixty-fourth Avenue. There's barricades staggered on there to prevent, you know, traffic from flowing all the way down to Highway thirty-eight, cause there still is kind of a construction access all the way out to the highway, but we don't intend that to be open for, through traffic. And I guess the most recent item, the Clomar, is now approved, so we've given Sukup the, you know, approval, I guess, to move forward with filling the floodway and making start on the next quarter construction.
Okay.
And I also have a pay application.
We have a pay application, and we've got, and we'll be talking about that a little bit further in new business about traffic control and so, I don't want to get too diverted on traffic control yet, so.
Motion to approve application number six to Sukup Incorporated for four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five thousand ninety-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second. Discussion, questions? Hahn? Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Those were the highlights in our report, if you guys have any other questions for me, feel free to ask.
Just wanted to just, I thought, just finally, Colin, did, there was some liquidated damages on this project, is that correct?
On Mickelson.
On Mickelson, yeah.
Yes, yes, we had actually two different categories, I guess, of liquidated damages. The first was for the sewer and water portion, which I want to say was like twenty-three days of damages, and then there was four days of damages for the second phase, and actually that, that was just based on where my cutoff was for these quantities, so there's probably gonna be additional days of damages for that second phase.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh. Thanks, John. All right, Craig is now here to make a couple things in his report, read over, and I was looking for some things on the road, and we also have the added fence repairs, the sports complex, just maybe I'll cover just any of the high points there, we have two bits out there for, for that.
You know, earlier this year, we got damage from a windstorm storm out the sports complex, bent some of our poles, mainly bent the four-inch poles, our six-inch poles stayed okay, but those bent, Craig did have, got a couple quotes on repairing those, he got from both, he got a quote from American Fence and one from Michael Spence, and he had on quote the four-inch and the six-inch. Michael Spence was the cheaper of the two quotes, both ways. We replaced, you know, four-inch with four-inch, like we have now, the quotes are almost close to twenty-seven thousand dollars. If we replace those four-inch with the six-inch poles, then it's thirty thousand dollars. So I think for that, three thousand difference there, we might be better off going with the six-inch because they seem to hold up better, especially where that sports complex is so wide open out there, you know, they're gonna get the winds and ice and the storm, so long run, we might be better off replacing it that way. We, as we talked before, we don't have coverage for any fencing, you know, as far as damages through our insurance, so we have to pay this. I am, I did talk to him about giving a rider to add that to our insurance, and so I am getting a quote for future, we can get that quote and we can see if it may be something we want to add, if that might be a, you know, better way to go. We can weigh the difference of, you know, if we take our risk or if we want to add that to our insurance, but we can talk about that in the future. This wasn't covered, so.
Is this something we should put insurance on before we fix it?
We're not gonna, and, and we can't, we can't talk ahead that discussion before we fix it, we, they won't be coming out to do this until spring, they're too booked up and they can't get out here this fall yet anyways.
Insurance option before spring?
Yeah, so we can talk about, cause I, I was hoping to have that quote before this meeting, but I haven't got it yet, so that's something we can talk about before we actually decide to do.
Was it, was it wind and ice last time, or was it just rain? I don't recall it being ice.
I can't remember either.
It was during a storm, it was really windy, yeah, it was really windy.
I remember wind, but I don't remember the ice being a factor.
During a storm, out there, we had ice hanging, I think it was just mainly the wind, yeah.
So I, I see that this, their, their proposal's good for thirty days, so if we approve this, they're basically gonna order this material, we're not gonna see a pricing increase between now and their installation time.
Right, exactly. Approving this will lock this in at this price.
So I don't know, maybe like follows commodities market, it's pretty volatile right now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, if we wait till spring, you know, it may go up quick then.
So you'd be looking for a motion?
Yep, I'd be looking for a motion.
I make motion to approve the proposal from Michael Spence and Supply for thirty thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Second. You gonna take a general?
Say another question, come, square.
Sports complex.
Nobody here represent that, I'm sure. Take the, everybody's already quote-unquote spoken for, isn't it? More or less.
General.
I was suggesting that.
Do you want separate motion for that, or should we amend his motion?
I would amend it.
Does Travis need to do that, or?
Yeah.
Make motion to amend my motion and to designate these funds be taken out of the general fund.
I'll amend my second.
Yeah?
Yeah, I was looking.
Close him up.
Close him up. I'll second the amended motion, should I set it that way?
How's that, is that better?
I think we'll just go with what we have. All right. I have a session. I will vote. Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Nelson? Yes.
Brown?
Yep. Jones? Yes.
Give, give that gift to the city council, Robert's rule board.
Yeah, that is a really good thing.
All right, any, anything else you want to make sure it's covered?
I say, I don't know if you have any other questions on, you know, the, on his report or what he had here?
I, I have a question on his report, Teresa. Being out of compliance in September, did we get a fine for that or just a nasty letter?
Just a letter. Yeah, we get a fine.
That was for a money?
Yeah.
See, the payload arrived.
We got payload going, kind of stretching from that.
Let's bring that up.
Yeah.
Let's talk about that for a couple.
I know we have time for that.
All right, we're gonna move on to the finance.
I do want to mention Craig said he will be out late in the ground.
Okay, good. Skip here coming, we can, we can move past the payload.
I have comments on that, I'll save them.
All right, Karen, do you have some things you want to cover in the finance officer report?
I have nothing to add to my report unless you have questions.
Questions?
How difficult would it be to do year-to-date as compared to previous years? Is that, is that difficult?
I can do that.
That'd be excellent, thank you.
All right, and same thing, Teresa for your report, say anything.
Um, no, just what I had in my pack as far as updates on the different items. Just wanted to touch base on our recreation director position, I have three applications in now for that, so I've had a couple phone calls too about it, I asked him to get something in application to me next couple of weeks, so maybe Art and Travis, I could look at something towards the end of November and kind of look at these candidates again, so I'll get together with you then.
When did you say, Teresa?
End of November sometime, you know, maybe after, maybe look at the last week of November, possibly, through the holidays.
Where did that, when does that close, or has it closed?
Well, I did set a closing date just so we can have applications come, the people I talked to, I've asked them to get their applications to me within the next couple of weeks, so then we can take a week to look at them and then, you know, possibly do some interviewing and.
Where do you have that posted at?
This is just with the colleges, the college just posted, these are with, for the interns, yeah, so, got that, so, we'll look at those applicants then, and I did put a notice about the I-90 Interstate Exchange, they are having a public meeting later this month, on the twenty-sixth, I believe, the public meeting is at six o'clock that evening, it'll be at the fire station again, they are having a kind of private meeting on your state for the stakeholders that afternoon. I don't know an exact time on that, but they think that'll be roughly about the same time, it goes at one-thirty last time, so it'd be one-thirty-two as well, and, and me and Craig will be there in behalf of the city. We've been part of the study committee, so we kind of know what's gonna be presented, but, as public meeting, they've come up with a couple different plan designs, and so they're gonna get public input from there and answer any questions and discuss them and go from there, so. Any other questions on my report?
Will they have mockups, blueprints on the twenty-sixth?
They'll have, yeah, they'll have some boards of, yeah, pictures of what they're proposing.
Just want to plant a seed here about the sports complex, recreational director, those applicants maybe don't pan out so well, that just be taking full-time position.
It's hard to find part-time.
Good, good.
Okay. All right, I think, do you have any other questions? Next, Teresa? And with that, sports complex donations, I do want to, I want to put one thing I can talk about, I didn't mention this one other time, but when I made my motion back, or I made an appointment way back when, it was probably earlier this year for Jones and Keel to kind of help liaison with the sports complex committee, that's been, that's been quite a thing, and at the time, I didn't add pay for those meetings, didn't, didn't even think of it when I made the appointment, actually, so wanted to see if we can add that for next agenda, to have that considered, so that we can maybe retroactively cover some of their meeting pay, it's almost kind of things that they've been doing, is that because we do not have an employee that represents that group, those two have been covering that quite, quite well for us as a council, so I'm considering that actually, so.
Sports complex donations, I'll bring to you guys, I'm gonna cover this, how you wanna
go, I think there's been some discussion on this, Teresa, you got some to put on this too, so.
Yeah, so basically at the last meeting, you know, you wanted me to gather some more information as far as, you know, the sports complex is trying to put together, you know, a kind of a go-ahead with accepting donations and figure out how that's gonna work, you know, as far as advertising and who gets the money and just various things out the sports complex, you know, if, if they buy something, you know, who does it belong to, who takes care of it, who maintains it? So, talked with Larry after our last meeting, and he talked with a couple cities, and I talked with a couple cities and to see how they run their program, and kind of all over the board, some of it's pretty loosely monitored between their committees and the city, some of the bigger cities, like Vermillion, I talked to them quite a bit, they, they kind of gave me a lot of good information, it really boils down to, we should have an agreement in place, the city should with the committee as far as how we're gonna handle all these situations, how, if they.
just various things out the sports complex, you know, if they buy something, you know, who does it belong to, who takes care of it, who maintains it? So, talked with Larry after our last meeting, and he talked with a couple cities, and I talked with, um, a couple cities and to see how they run their program, and kind of all over the board, some of it's pretty loosely, um, monitored between their committees and the city, um, some of the bigger cities, like Vermillion, I talked to them quite a bit, they, they kind of gave me a lot of good information, it really boils down to, um, we should have an agreement in place, the city should with the committee, as far as how we're gonna handle all these situations, how, if they get donations, who's gonna take those donations, um, how's the money gonna be monitored? Um, basically, if something is bought for the sports complex, like the scoreboard, who really owns them? Who's gonna maintain them? Who's gonna allow the advertising on them, the fancy? I mean, there's a lot of questions that need to be, um, kind of decided of how it's gonna be handled, so. I guess what it all boils down to, my recommendation is, and these, some of these people I've talked to, is should have an agreement in place, maybe we want to think about having a committee, a couple people from the council representing, you know, a couple sports complex committees, sit down with Larry, myself, come up with a draft agreement and then kind of go from there of how we're going to handle things going forward. Tournaments, who's, who's gonna, you know, run them, take the money, are we gonna charge any kind of fees for using our facility? I mean, there's a lot of questions that need to be hashed out, so.
You had mentioned that you and some of the cities that don't have agreements in place, after, after you asked them about it, they said, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of loosely run, and we, we, what would be done in place, because it's just kind of a, yeah, it's just kind of a free-for-all, and they, yeah, it's kind of loosely run a few of them, the smaller communities. Um, insurance-wise too, they strongly recommend an agreement, because, you know, once, you know, that facility gets used more and more, you know, softball tournaments, what if somebody gets hurt on there? Who's gonna cover that? Who's gonna be liable? What if, uh, just a bystander gets hurt? What if, um, some of the equipment gets damaged? Who's gonna take care? I mean, there's liability issues there too, as far as insurance-wise, that, you know, need to be sorted out, so. I said, you know, if the council's good with it, I, I, I think we just need to have a, a group discuss these different items, come up with a plan and then present that.
Can you, uh, tweak the Hoxsey Falls and Vermillion, Vermillion specifically?
Yeah, I can.
Pull that and then, uh, we could start to fill in some blanks, uh.
Yeah.
Make some great points in your, your comments here, that'll help us, you know, expand in the areas.
That's what I'd probably do, start off with an agreement that's already in place and tweak it for, uh, or, you know.
Did they send you copies of their stuff?
I, I didn't, I just, you know, this is just gathering kind of initial information, so I don't have copies, but that's what I'd like.
That'd be good to see.
And like I said, have a starting point of where to go from here, so.
Yeah.
We're all in agreement.
Do you want a motion to go ahead and move back forward with that?
Well, if you, yeah, and if you, do you want to appoint a couple people of mine, or, I mean, Travis and Arden were, have been working real closely with the sports complex, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, is anybody looking to jump in on the donation side of this party?
To what degree? I mean, I guess, are you asking, is it? Are the donations ready to come in, and, or would it, I just, I feel like it'd be better to get some agreements put in place before we start soliciting anything?
I guess my question is, does anybody on this council feel very strongly about a certain way that donations should be handled for the sports complex, because if you do, I will step back, otherwise we've had lots of discussions already about it, so I'm comfortable moving forward with it, but. The only concern I have, Travis, I think Garrett expressed this, is if they're gonna be selling signage or naming rights, you know, because ultimately if they're hanging four by eight sheet supply around the city fence, that could be problematic if we're not getting money and the advertisements, you know, could possibly damage city equipment, so. You know, and it's no different if they're gonna name fields, you know, and I don't know, I don't know the whole regular rule, but I know that you start putting sponsorship up out there, if the city doesn't receive those funds for sponsorship on taxpayer land, I can see that's gonna be problematic in the future, so that's my only concern of all.
And I think that's what we have to do with, I mean, the agreements are gonna have to be laid out, I mean, that's really what we gotta, that's the next step.
When you talk donations with that group, two things happen, first their eyes glaze over.
Yeah.
Then the second thing is, you got the super optimistic person that says, what happens if we get a million bucks? So, good problem to have, yeah. We'll figure it out, but we get this in place first and we can get much better direction.
Typically though, Travis, they, after, when we start talking about it, and after the eyes glaze over, then they say, well, what do you guys want us to do? That is always their second question.
And that's where the agreement will just.
I mean. We keep saying to them, tell us what you, you know, give us some, give us some thought, and then they just, real hesitant person. Yeah, so.
I guess I haven't talked to him about it ahead of time, but I'd like to see, um, Jones and Keel on that group with pay. That would be, that would be my appointment for if it's a separate group to help draft up the agreement.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to approve that appointment?
So, what?
Second?
I do.
Discussion? All right, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson? Keel?
Yes.
I'm standing.
Looks good, any more direction on that one either?
Give us some dates, way, and, and talk with Matt, and I don't know who else would come from that group. Matt, you can, you can. Yeah, I don't know who they'll want to have. Are you able to go Sunday night, Travis?
Yes, yes.
Cause I'm gonna get them. I've bailed on it in the last couple, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll move on to new business this one, um, and then we want to make sure we get a chance to discuss traffic control on Mickelson Road. So, now that we're at that point, we're coming into winter and we're able to start moving along that, what do we, what do we need to do? I think we got some public input on that, so we're gonna take some time to make sure we get a chance for public input, and what I'm gonna say on public input too is, if somebody goes before you, don't, don't come up or repeat the same thing they said, but if you got some new things to add to it, like that, we'll always have you come to the podium, make sure you state your names, so Karen can get it for minutes, all of those kind of things, but, um. Maybe I'll start with Teresa, give us some background on this.
Okay, well, like we said, going into winter, um, Mickelson Road is substantially complete, you know, as far as we're gonna go this fall, we'll have to come back next spring to do the box culverts and the connection. So, two things, um, we need to decide going in, and this has been brought up, now that we've got a portion of it open, um, is, are we gonna do any signage for stop signs or controlling traffic? I know there's been concerns about, you know, the speeds going down there, so are we gonna do anything with that? Or if we're gonna keep it, you know, open as an arterial street and, and no stop signs and just stop the oncoming traffic? And then the other thing is, um, I want to talk, just touch briefly, and lots kind of touched on this, is the gravel portion that, that we're not finished with yet, are we gonna completely close that off? Which staff recommendation is we do, it's gonna be a nightmare to maintain those gravel sections through the winter. I think we have a lot, the new portion especially is not up to grade to be driving on, so you know, that's a liability situation. So, we'd like to completely control them, or close them off during the winter time, so. There won't be through the winter a connection to Highway thirty-eight, those will be shut down, so. Um, I guess, you know, whichever portion you want to start talking about, whether it's the stop sign, or if you're in agreement with shutting down the gravel portion area, we can just talk about the, the, you know, traffic control.
Do you need a motion to shut down the gravel or not?
They've already done it, but I'd like the council to agree to it, so.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to close the gravel portion of Mickelson, at the discretion of city staff engineers.
Do we have second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, discussion?
I was just gonna make one comment, that, um, Sioux Coop does plan on working throughout the winter on the grading and box culvert, um, and I think their plan was to use that as a temporary access to get, you know, equipment and vehicles back and forth as, as needed. I think, once they start doing the major grading work, they're gonna be hauling from south of, uh, the new Mickelson Road, I guess, and using scrapers to get across the creek, so probably end up creating a new crossing somewhere further south of Mickelson, but.
Closing that road?
Closing the road would still be okay.
Yeah, that just tells the public that.
Yeah.
Just holding it to the public, yeah.
From a construction standpoint, they want to continue the work, but, uh, yeah, it would be closed down if there were traffic.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I was gonna try to take a look, uh, is that old bridge still there?
Yes.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it, I was like, okay.
Is that the South Guard rail?
Long story. And just for, just for the sake of asking you, the plan is still to keep that bridge out?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, a motion to propose for through traffic through winter, public access on that?
Who was the second on that?
Travis, all right, either one of us, give it to Travis, he likes to have his name. It looks like a conflict of interest, if you approve it. I, well, I know, I have thoughts, I'll leave.
All right, any more discussion on that? Now, we'll vote, Maya?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson? And Nelson?
Yes.
So, now can we go to the other part? I'd like, you're from Tyrone, him and I have had a couple conversations about this.
Okay.
Is that a good place for us to start? I'd like to have him give his spiel.
Um, did a little research on my own as far as what are the perceived problems of Mickelson, and it seems to be that everybody's worried about the speed. I think if you talk to any, uh, city engineer, anybody responsible for traffic, um, and, you know, it hasn't, so I'm not talking out of my pay grade again, which I do a lot, it seems to me. I did talk to the sheriff and mentioned it to him as far as if there's complaints of speed on Mickelson, and the first thing out of his mouth, I hope, I hope they don't think the stop signs is gonna do it. So, I mean, that's from him, he did traffic in Sioux Falls, and like he said, every city engineer he's ever talked to, that you can't control speed with stop signs. Stop signs are meant to improve traffic flow of vehicles, um, to put unnecessary stop signs in, causes people to roll through stop signs, stop sign violations, which would increase the, the, um, the possibility of more traffic accidents. The thinking of places to put a four-way stop in the way that that road is designed, where right now you're really just turning either south or north. You know, when they do develop the, the eastern part of Mickelson, you're just gonna be turning south, you're probably, you're not gonna be turning north as you drive Mickelson going west, all your turns are gonna be going south until you get up to Opal, and you start turning left. It's a three-lane road, which is a pretty good artery for this town to get through. Um, when you start stopping people, you create, people like to make up time. So, if you put a four-way stop anywhere in between thirty-eight and Western, people are going to start to speed to make up time. People are, you talked about, one of the articles I wrote was noise pollution, you put in a stop sign or unnecessary stop signs, it creates acceleration. So, every kid with loud pipes on his truck stops, accelerates, causes more, uh, noise pollution, more noise. Speed is controlled by signage and traffic enforcement, you know, until people get the message. You know, like I said, thirty-eight's been a honey hole for years, I remember when that was a sixty-five, going to a fifty, going to a thirty-five. You know, that was a great place to get tickets, because people just missed that sign, that one sign coming into Hartford before it dropped from a fifty to a thirty-five to, you know, the school zone. Also, the, the, the high-traffic times that I can think of are probably gonna be in the morning, work commute, and, uh, after school, and getting to school. It's gonna create stop signs, people typically look at a stop sign a block or two before and then take a ride into a residential area. So, you're gonna increase the amount of traffic flow in residential areas where there aren't stop signs, where there are uncontrolled intersections, just because you don't, you, you, they're not really, you know, you turn off, uh, Shamrock or down in there, you're gonna be buzzing through, because there's no stop signs going through there. So, just, again, my opinion, looking at it, I don't have an opinion on speed, because I find myself as, as a, a cop in town driving, I've got nowhere to go. Everybody seems to be going fast, even when they're going the speed limit. I get on Western and people, I back that traffic up every time I jump on Western, because I'm going thirty. Cause I've got nowhere to go. Now, when I'm in town and I actually have somewhere to go, I could see me pushing, you know, at the speed limit. And, you know, in, in my mind, I think thirty's probably fast enough on Mickelson, but then again, I'm not going anymore. So, I, I guess that'll be, you know, that's just my opinion, I, I don't, I can't offer any expertise on how fast that should be, if it should be a thirty-five or a thirty, or, you know, something along those lines. I don't know if you have any questions, or?
What's your thoughts on the stop sign in Fighter?
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it, you said? Really, I would round.
Well, I think that for once, when you get, the, the people are more likely to take Western, you, you get a artery that flows through, and that's still a twenty mile an hour zone from Fighter all the way to the school. We sat there one morning, Jared and I, after a complaint, and wrote a lot of elementary parents' morning citations for speeding, one right after the other. So, I think that Turtle Creek area, um, and with the four-way, I think it'll get people to make that right turn going down Fighter, as opposed to either taking, coming out on thirty-eight once Mickelson's done, to get to Second Street to the elementary, or going down to Western, or if they live in that area, just to drive, you know, just to drive to the school. But I, I don't see a lot of, um, for some reason, there's lots of traffic on Mickelson right now, going on, going to the school, people coming in from out of town, not utilizing, um, Second Street, which does not have any stop signs. And it doesn't seem to be too much of a speed problem, other than Main Street here, which is a tough stop sign for people to stop at too. You know, they roll through, so, not that we've had any accidents there, I mean, people are usually driving slow enough in this area of town, but we don't have any stop signs going through Second Street, and that doesn't seem to be a, a danger or a threat to the amount of kids that are, you know, we have a fifty mile an hour zone, but, and we police it, and people know we're there. Usually somebody's in an area to forget it.
I think part of what happened on Mickelson is, and Western, it's bigger, it's wider, it's, it feels safer to drive faster out of, than it does to come down Second.
And I think that's something we can fix with signage and, and policing, getting people to slow down.
My observation of stop signs that went on Van Mark for speed control, the only people that stop at those stop signs are the people that live in that neighborhood. Everybody else rolls through that thing, or flat out.
Rolls it, which makes it more dangerous, because you assume that that person is gonna stop.
That's exactly my comment, that, you assume that that person coming from the north or the south is gonna stop, and so as you start to roll out there, the realization becomes that they're not, that just creates, right?
And with that three-lane road coming, and somebody's coming, and you're assuming they're gonna stop, and they've, you know, they've driven, complacency is, is a big deal in a lot of the accidents that I do, where people just, you know, pull up to that stop sign and go, pull up to that stop sign and go, pull up to that stop sign and go. I did one north of town where a lady has been driving that same road, looked right at me and then pulled right out in front of me. I barely missed her, and she goes, I can't believe I looked right at you and did exactly the same thing I've been doing for the last twenty years. I pull up to that stop sign, no one's ever there, and I pull up, so, but.
Did you write her a ticket?
Did you write her a ticket?
I felt bad.
Nice guy.
I felt bad for her, she was shook up enough, I figured that, but, yeah.
What ticket do you write?
She stopped.
What's that?
What ticket do you write? She stopped.
She stopped, she just took care.
You yield the right away.
Yield the right.
Yield the right away, there you go.
I will say.
I'll make sure that we take some time for.
Yeah, yeah, that's just my two cents of that, I've been here all night, so.
Yeah.
Anybody that lives down there, wants to take a, a comment, make sure you state your name for the record, address.
Yeah, uh, my name's Chris Craft, uh, I live on the corner of Mickelson and Cloverleaf.
Yes.
Right there, uh, I'm a great time, I know I'm busy, I'll keep it short. Um, you know, speeds, certainly, I don't have a radar gun, so I can't say what people are driving, what's out there, but it certainly seemed like they fly down there, I mean, it was that way when it was gravel, and the pavement certainly doesn't seem to change that at all any. Um, you know, my thought on the Arcero Street, I have to pegged it that, but, um, Mickelson, to me, with it all open to the south, no houses out there whatsoever, that seems to be kind of an open feel for people, that they can just go, you know, as opposed to Second Street with, you know, if you got houses and streets come from both directions, lots of traffic turning on and off, and that seems to keep traffic in check, where I think on Mickelson, as open as it is, they get on and just take off and go. Um, you know, right now, from. Um, you know, right now, from the stop sign in Fighter out toward the street starts to curve, because the curve's gonna have some speed control the way it is, but they've got three-quarters of a mile from Fighter out toward the road, and it starts to turn. And you take that stop sign on Fighter, they're gonna have a full mile in between, you know, Western and that curve down there. And I don't think that's gonna help to cause any, with any, you know, speed out there. We've got, um, Lisa's got a daycare, just house in off the corner of Mickelson there, a lot of kids around that area. We've got a bus stop right on the corner of Cloverleaf and Mickelson. Um, so the kids are congregating there every morning, and I know the other day there was a couple even out further than they should be probably, as they're waiting for the bus. So, um, in my opinion, I think some traffic control out there would help. I mean, that, as that develops out there, and you get houses on both sides, and, you know, maybe traffic keeps itself in check, and at that time you don't need it. But at this point, as open as it is, I, I would be in favor of some traffic control out there.
And your definition of traffic control is stop signs?
Uh, yes, I would appreciate some tough ones out there, in my opinion, yes.
The advantage Mickelson has over Van Mark, we've got the same, it's very similar scenario. There's nothing on the west side, feels like you're out in the country. Uh, but there's also four driveways that you let them back into, out of, on the Van Mark. And again, I stress that, um, initially, when that stop sign went in, it's doing a good thing, people are stopping. Now we're four years into it, it's, it's merely a suggestion that they stop. The people, again, the people that stop would be your neighbors, those people that wanted it, you're gonna, you're gonna adhere to it?
Definitely have some pretty amazing stats from the traffic count.
Oh, yeah.
About
Speed.
Speed and people, I mean, the stop sign did really not help.
Yeah, so, I understand where you're coming from. I live on the, on the corner, I witnessed it, and it is, is actually, just saying, initially, you're gonna, you're gonna think, maybe you did the right thing here, that it's just not gonna work. I respect your opinion.
I would say Tyrone's, uh, I, I can see both, Chris and I have had this conversation, so I can see both sides. I'm as fearful that nobody's stopping like on our corner or on your corner, pulling onto Mickelson. I think we're just a matter of time, somebody's gonna get, somebody's gonna get, get piled up there, there's just no doubt, it's gonna happen. And all the summer of the construction, I had a lot of traffic past my house. I'm telling you, maybe two out of ten, three out of ten may be stopped, may be stopped. So, if we're gonna enforce, we gotta really hit, I mean, the people coming on from the side streets are gonna really have to be enforced to get that thing slowed down. I would also say, Chris, I, I don't know if this is possible, if you could put a school zone on a street like that, so in the morning and afternoon, when the buses are loaded, can you slow them down? Can, is that, like it's on Second?
Well, if there's any way to get the buses to load off of Mickelson, it'd probably be the best.
Well, right now, they've got, they've got a stop down at the end of Aaron Circle.
Yeah.
Down on Shamrock, and then one over on Mulligan, the
Yeah.
Mulligan, the, or, and then they circle off around and come back and stop on Mickelson, the corner of Mickelson and Cloverleaf there for that stop. So, I mean, without doing a lot of backtrack, and I mean, they could come off of Mickelson, but they'd have to do a lot of backtrack and through that residential area with the bus.
You know, they'd have, yeah, they'd have to make another circle, get back on Shamrock, and come back around.
Could you do one of those, like, signs that starts, like, blinking really fast?
Well, and that's another thing, too, like, you're gonna have to have some sort of crosswalk.
Yeah.
Like they have on thirty-eight, where, you know, there's gonna have to be something where, where they hit the button. And then scare me too, because people have a hard time stopping for those, or really don't even know what the rules are. When they hit that button, and it's flashing, you have to stop. And, you know, sitting on there in the mornings, waiting for, you know, when kids are crossing or bicycles are crossing over Mickelson, you're gonna have to have something like that set up on, like it is on thirty-eight.
I know, but you're talking about a blinking.
I'm talking about, like, a blinking thing, like, if you go, like, if it's thirty-five percent, when you hit, like, over thirty-five, and it blinks at you. I respond better to those personally.
I like the ones in Sioux Falls, because they tell you what your speed is and remind you how fast you're going. So I think the investment of signage and obviously enforcement is, is a good investment for safety purposes. Um, it's just from what I've read, as far as what the purpose of the stop signs are, if they are really being safer and slowing people down, it turns out that they're not really doing what people want them to do.
I can personally attest to that, because I have a worthless stop sign in front of my house on the month, and then six, like, runs into my driveway. It's, it's pointless.
It's, yeah.
Except for the noise, like, people are, kids are revving their engines.
Yeah, the ones that stop, then they sit there and accelerate out of it.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a, yeah.
But, you know, I'm kinda curious about that, not to get too far down the road on it, but just, we've been talking about, you know, we've got that trailer that we use, and we pull it out there, and we can monitor speeds, or, you know, people can see what their speed is, all of that, but, um, you know, this discussion is a little bit more about a permanent
Right.
Some, permanent signage or something out there that's always gonna tell them.
I wonder if, uh, has anybody talked to Rich Conker at, uh, school?
I sent him an email, um, letting him know that we were discussing it here, but I never, he didn't hear.
I wonder what.
I don't know, I think Lisa's had some discussions.
It may be helpful just to have a, just to have a conversation with them, that may change, maybe we can have some, get some insight from him on changing that, possibly changing that route. I don't know, I don't think they will. I know they stopped just past Fighter, too.
They probably go up to Opole and.
I think they stopped two places at least, right on Mickelson, right on the road.
The bus does, sorry.
Other public, sorry.
Thank you, very kind.
Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else?
Michael Ingles, I live on Shamrock and Mickelson. And I guess, in addition to Chris's concern about the speed on the road, I kinda worry a little bit about people turning off the road as well. Um, I've been out there with my kids and have come really close to somebody, you know, pulling around and hitting my kids. Just because, um, you know, when they're taking that corner, there's no indication to slow down, and they, they whip around that corner. So that's just, that's one of my concerns. With the, with just the overall traffic control, it's not just the speed, it's taking that corner, too.
Corner right there by your office, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the corner on Shamrock, they're gonna accelerate.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I suppose taking a thirty-five down to a twenty and not, you know, not bothering to slow down.
Yeah, it's, they, it's quick. Especially, you know, coming on that right turn, when they're coming, um, east or west, you know, it's just no indication to slow down. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you have a question?
Sorry.
Thanks, man.
Arden or Jessica, are you suggesting possibly that we pull up this portable trailer and stay it there for a couple of weeks?
Oh, I don't think that was heard, but I think we really have to start, we gotta formulate a
A long-term.
Long-term plan of what we're gonna do.
We got it, uh, we got our law enforcement.
Twenty-four-seven coming first of the year.
Twenty nineteen.
Correct.
I have a question for you too, on Mickelson, being, we're talking about safety, that the post office is gonna require me to be in group mailboxes? And I was told to put it on the north side of Mickelson. I was, I was gonna put one centered on the cul-de-sacs for both cul-de-sacs. Is that gonna be a problem?
Boy, it doesn't seem to make sense. Boy, let's get everybody walking across this team.
You know.
It's on the north, north side.
Well, we have time to put a certain.
Car stop and get the mail getting rear-ended.
Right.
Cause I, but, that's where they told me to put it, and I, I ordered mailboxes, but I mean, now's the time to move it.
You ordered one for both cul-de-sacs.
What's that?
You ordered one mailbox for both cul-de-sacs, you're gonna put it between those driveways?
That's what I thought.
On the north side of Mickelson?
It is the, it is the driveway.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that. I'll thought, I think we can maybe get this with you a little bit.
Okay.
Um, because we can't, um.
I don't think you want to.
No. Is there a reason we can't move it around all the corners of the cul-de-sac?
Okay, wherever you go.
I think that is the one.
You have to work with the post office, the ones that deliver the mail, they set where the carriers go. Uh, we never tell people where to put mailboxes. We say you have to coordinate that with the post office, because they have their carriers and their route set out, so they all have to coordinate it. And it's the post office that is making now developments.
Yeah, it's not people. I don't have property.
These units, the postal office is requiring it, so, anything we do will have to coordinate with the post office. I mean, I, I, I don't see the sense of it either, I don't know why they can't go into the cul-de-sac, but, I don't know.
Fifty-five or sixty-five hundred mailboxes. You know, I mean, it's not ideal, but.
You have to move down to run out of finished mail.
I'll tell you what, I deal with, I deal with mail every day, John.
I don't think it works, but I just.
Oh, I don't think, I don't, I'm not saying it's ideal, but it's not sixty-five mile an hour on a highway.
Well, it might be, but it shouldn't be. You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
All right, do we have? It'll be there called. Yeah, just a couple more minutes on it, do we have any, anybody else else to say anything? Any suggestions or motions from council?
We do nothing, just say, "Oh, yeah," is that right?
That's right. I'd be very interested in pricing and some suggestions on some, you know, we've got those the safe routes to school signs, right, and I know this is a different deal, but those solar powered, maybe we power them, I don't know, I don't know what we need to do, but some, some signs that would indicate speed out on that road, I don't know how many it would take, but something that, that flashes, or something along those lines. I'm not saying let's go ahead and do it, but let's at least price some of those and find out.
I think it's a pricey on those, yeah.
What we can do there.
I, I really believe that this is gonna be an enforcement issue, just like it is like parents on Van Mark. I have, I was, I'm on the corner of hitting the Van Mark, and the only thing my stop gets me, my stop sign gets me, is aggravation. Because I see people, I can stand in my front yard and watch people blow through that thing at twenty-five miles an hour, as they look over at me and jam on the brakes, and they end up stopping about three-quarters of the way through the intersection, and then they're like, yeah, I stopped, he seen me, I'm about thirty foot past the stop sign, and then off they go. And, I mean, honestly, and, and this is another thing, we can, we can pick on kids all day long. But I'll tell you what, the biggest offenders in this town are mid-range men, and when and if you're not prepared to tell that man to start getting tough with your neighbors and your friends, because that's who it is. That's the lion's share of the speeders and stop sign runners in this town. Because your neighbors start getting popped, and your friends start getting popped.
And again, you know, and my theory on this is I'm a hammer, it's all, it's all, I hurt you, wanna swing me?
So, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for zero tolerance on Mickelson and Van Mark for that matter. I'm, I'm all for that.
Especially when it's early.
Yeah.
When it's wide open, the tickets, the more tickets that go out.
But what's, what's a stop sign, what do you do, a hundred and twenty bucks?
Hundred and twenty bucks.
Hundred and twenty bucks for a stop sign? So you start swinging that hammer on your neighbors? Speeding is, oh, I suppose, that's gotta be
No, it starts at eighty.
Yeah, eighty bucks to go.
Most of the time, and to be honest with the speeding ticket, you, you know, and that's what I'm talking about when you're setting your speed limits. For your town is that it's that five mile an hour cushion, while kids are always asking me about the five mile an hour cushion, I said, well, are you gonna get pulled over for doing thirty-three in a thirty? Probably not. If you get into a wreck and you're doing thirty-three, and someone pulls up in front of you, you've just lost your right of way, it's your, you caused that accident. So I'm like, if you're gonna break the speed limit, you're gonna be responsible for every accident that happens to you. That's what I tell the kids. Now, if you're five over, um, you'll probably get pulled over, maybe get a warning, maybe, you know, maybe get a ticket. Uh, you're ten over, they may reduce the ticket, depending on how you treat the officer. So I mean, this is just the dynamics of the vehicle stop. Uh, and that goes from officer to officer, we have discretion. I'll tell you right now, there's guys in our department, if they step out of their car, you're getting a ticket. So, that's, you know, and if it's a trooper, that's his main focus, is traffic control. You know, you're probably gonna get the full effect of whatever you did.
It, it doesn't matter, I mean, as I said, I think it's an enforcement issue. Because I don't run around in your neck of the woods, I don't, so I won't get a speeding ticket on Mickelson, I won't get a ticket for running stop signs. I just won't. But the people that do, or the people that will, are people that live in your neighborhood. And we instruct him to drop a big hammer, and you're gonna hear your friends and neighbors complaining. About a hundred and twenty bucks here, and eighty bucks there.
I prefer that over my kids' kid.
Oh, I said you?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, and, and one of the things, too, is I, in, in twenty-eight years, I've never taken an accident report where their kids got run in the street. I think as parents, we do a really good job of educating our kids to stay the heck out of the street. You know, even if they do happen to get away, um, there's boundaries, and like I said, as parents, we really teach our kids to stay off the road, because there is that, you know, the big bad teenager driving around too fast. So we do a really good job of that, and very rarely have, in twenty years have I seen, you know, I've seen unsupervised kids, I just don't see them in the road. Because even, you know, they, they, we teach them that.
I, I lived on that corner for twenty-three years, now the mason parents have been kidding, like, ooh. And I'll tell you what, you take that traffic in conjunction with swimming pool, that's a far bigger risk than, than your neighbor in your corner. But it's been twenty-three years, and by the grace of God, maybe we've really had an accident there.
And like I said, most people wanna do the right thing, and they see a kid on a bike waving around, they slow down, whether they're teenagers or adults, they slow down and watch to make sure that kid don't dart in front of them, and, so, you know, those are just the dynamics of it.
All right, the list, we got any motions or anything else for?
What's the speed limit right now?
Thirty.
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 I'd say we just direct, uh, the sheriffs to enforce thirty mile an hour, no leaning to security. Go to the foreseeable future and see if that has an effect. That includes you.
I don't get them get out of jail free card.
That'd be my suggestion.
Is that a motion?
Or maybe a motion.
I'll second it then.
All right, discussion?
So when your friends and neighbors get pulled over, tell them, "Let me in there."
All right, Wolf, Mania?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brenner?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Do you have a rest?
Thank you, and then we can, you're assuming we open up that second.
I was just gonna say that, Jeremy, I think, I think this discussion is gonna come up again, when we get the rest of that open, and they're coming off the highways, and it's really gonna change this.
I think it's gonna bring more traffic out from that area of people trying to.
Oh, absolutely, come to us.
Agreed, and right now, it's just people that live up that area, but I think as that gets open on what, thirty, it's gonna bring a little more.
Yeah, I think we'll have this discussion again.
Just one interesting note, we have kids, a lot of traffic on Second Street, coming in from the south, crossing the interstate, going on Second Street, going over. And actually, the, the ones that were doing it, I was getting complaints on, you know, traffic, heavy traffic and stuff, I said, you know, it's actually two minutes faster if you drove the whole way around to thirty-eight and then to the high school. Than it was to get on Second Street and cut a crash. And that, that actually helped a little bit, I drove it, and it's like, yeah, it's actually, you know, and that doesn't comp, the actual cars stopping in the road and delays that you get from people dropping kids on them, so.
All right, thanks, guys.
We're gonna move over to one, one question, since we got some residents from that neighborhood. Um, a concern that brought to my attention about closing that actually was, um, from a life safety standpoint, so there was like, what about, uh, fire, or if you need an ambulance, and they, the fire department's on the west side of town, so that shouldn't be an issue. No concern about, you know, ambulance or fire to reclose that, I mean, that road being closed now to be used for winter, no concerns. I don't think they get through there currently, right? All right, it's fair enough.
All right, we're gonna move to relocation, I have a question. The area, this is up on, this is up on, um, the Kelly Point position up there, so, we've got some wetlands, HEDC, we have some of that that we can, people look at.
So basically, just a little background, like you put in your packet, back in two thousand and two, HEDC had some, um, land they owned, run a water tower up there. They originally owned that land, and they wanted to develop it or have it for sale for development. So we need to mitigate those wetlands, we actually moved them from there down to along Railroad Street, basically, on the east end of Railroad Street, and there, on the east end of the Gulf, or the discourse. Um, so, ba- Um, so, basically, when we moved that, then that whole area got put on a restrictive deed. You know, they need to stay wetland, the restricted deed area, we can't do anything in that area, we can't touch that area, we can't even go in and mow that area if we want it. It's untouchable because it has to be as nature wetlands. That was part of the deal with the Corps. So, um, John Darney come to me on behalf of his development and the Kelly Point, um, partners there. They would like to, you know, that they developed Shamrock all the way down, and, um, there's a couple maps in, in your packet. And they're doing the, the lots on the circles, but up against that restricted deed area. They would like to do a little grading work to help the drainage flow in that area. Um, right now, with, there's kind of a hump in that southwest corner, and the water kind of flows down into like people's yards. Now, it was open before, but it's coming into the yards, um, in order to help their grading out, you know, they wanna basically go in there and kind of regrade that a little bit. Um, basically to help out the drainage. So, I've been working with him and calling the, uh, gentleman, Harry Decker with the Corps of Engineers, saying, you know, Cindy, we can't just give permission to that, you gotta get permission from the Corps of Engineers. So, been talking with Harry Decker at the Corps of Engineers, told him what we wanna do, he's talked to me, and he's talked to Cindy Monin about that with Kelly Point. Um, he understands what we're trying to do, um, basically doesn't see an issue with, you know, um, basically giving up part of that wetland area, which is really kind of dry land because there's no water in there, and moving that basically from the southwest part of the area to, you know, the east part of Lot A. So if you look at your maps, John provided me the maps that are in your packet. There's a, a map of what it current, currently Lot A looks like, and then the next map shows the area that they wanna move, and then, you know, where they wanna move it to, and it's just on, basically, we wanna reconfigure Lot A. So, you know, there doesn't look like there's a problem with the Corps to go ahead and do it this, what they're asking. The question comes down to is that the Corps is going to, and I put them in your packet too, they got a whole list of stipulations that, okay, to do this, you gotta answer these certain questions. How are you gonna monitor? How are you gonna take care of it? Where are you gonna move it to? You know, da, 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 da. So you've gotta answer all that information, get that information to them for them to review. Um, so somebody needs to do that, whether it's the city or developers or the homeowners, somebody's gotta do those steps, and then somebody's gotta actually pay for that, so. And if John wants to add some more to this, so the three things we need to look at is the request to move the area, if we're okay with that, to reconfigure Lot A. Who's going to, um, answer the Corps' questions, or who's gonna get the information to the Corps of Engineers, and who's gonna pay for that, so.
How many, how many houses does this affect, or how many lots?
It affects five.
Five? Five houses.
Yeah, five residences here for this.
Okay.
We've been down, we've looked at this before with you guys. I mean, originally, the original grading plan approved us doing that, but we didn't do it because of the location, you know. Not so that really doesn't matter, but what, what we're proposing as the developers, if you would, we'll do the work if you do the paperwork. I mean, I'll, I'll do the grading.
You want the easy part?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I'd trade you dollars for that. I mean, we're, we're, uh, willing to go in there and grade it out for you. If you guys think, you know, have whoever's stockholder, whoever do the paperwork that's needed to do it.
So the rough estimate on that is about four thousand dollars, is that safe to say?
And that's just an estimate. I sent those conditions to Mitch, I said, you know, roughly, what do you think this would cost? He said, well, maybe around four thousand. So I mean, it, yeah, it's a rough estimate.
Rough estimate for grading, it seems, it still fits about fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
So by the time it's all done.
To me, I think it's safe. You know, when we, when we basically allow development to come in and, and be right up against that piece there, I, I wouldn't know why we wouldn't want to move some of that. This is gonna be a long-term thing, we're not just talking about this year, we're talking about the lifetime of these homes, really. Five homes, paying taxes, all of those kind of things. I, I guess, to me, now's the time to move it, get it done while people are moving dirt and doing all that things. We don't have to deal with this. Road where it's right up against the property line, where we have this wetland, and it's great on your property line there.
I mean, if, if water's gonna end up in the pond, whether we move the dirt or not, it's just gonna enhance their properties. I mean, it's gonna make your thing look a lot better, the area look a lot nicer if you did it.
So what's, what's the problem? Is the problem that our property, Lot A, is higher than the grading in the backyards of these five lots?
Yeah, as you go down, do you have this map?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, as you go down Shamrock, that first two lots, um, in that corner.
There's been a flood Lot A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're bad for the height difference. I mean, the water, it's running down behind them.
But that water doesn't run north. It just pools back there.
It runs north, but I mean, there's, there's a lot of hill right there.
Yeah. Could you stop pile of dirt there at one time? There's not a dirt pile there on Lot A?
No. No, it's always on ours.
Lot, Lot A is our lot.
Yeah, Lot A is your lot.
And that dirt pile is on our lot.
It's just, it's a natural hill. There's a big hill there. It is natural. We've never touched it, which we did. We've never had it.
We could never sit on it.
Right, I would have to stand there, dig.
And that's the issue being it's that wetlands, it can't touch.
It's not really wetland. It's, when they did that restricted deed.
Sure.
That encompasses the wetland. I mean, that's not wetland right where it's at.
Correct.
Not at all. I mean, it, but it was easy to put the deed where they did. I don't know, I shouldn't say easy, but it just took the lot lines.
We, we had so many acres we had to move, and so we had to go acre to acre, so we had to go wider than the wetland area just to appease the Corps. So, now this area, I mean, as you can see, it's not in the wetland, I mean, it's dry area, so we can swap it out for planted east.
Wetlands all the time, this, that wasn't an option then?
I did check into that. I called them, talked with the Corps, and originally when I talked with the Corps, I said, can we buy credits out of wetland? Because then we could forego all these stipulations. And he said originally, well, we, yeah, we could look in that, so then I was trying to get a price on that, and after I talked some more with Harry at the Corps, he says, actually, it's not gonna work because they're not wetlands. Yeah, we're, we're trying to exchange dry land area.
It's a restrictive deed, that's really.
It's a restrictive deed is a problem.
I mean, it's just a matter of moving boundaries there, plus the nine steps that, yeah, they require.
So you just wanna regrade, you just wanna move what's in the southwest corner to the central east side?
Yeah, we take that down and move it along the, the back lots of ours, not, not the dirty at all.
Well, you don't want it on your. You don't want your lot to be, so we have a problem in the future.
No, I'm gonna salt it. I mean, the dirt will be gone, we can zero it out right there in that corner.
If we think long-term, um, John, you could probably speak to this as well as anyone, um, you know, those, those, the areas there that are wet will, will settle and will fill in. At what point does that happen, and then that water just starts to become a problem for those residents?
It outlets out on that curb, it'll never suck to them.
So, but even if those settle and unfold.
I mean, it's way, way, way.
Even if those settle and unfold, the, the, the flow is just, it's not gonna cause an issue for those residents.
Correct. I mean, those wetlands were, were built according to the, uh, requirements and of the Corps of Engineers, and, you know, if it does get silted in over time, I mean, I, I, I really don't see that really gonna happen in our time.
Sure.
Um, because of the, the location, unless there's a lot of runoff that comes from this residential area, but, um, you know, I, you know, as far as that deed restriction, I can give you a little bit back history on that. We tried to actually have the deed restriction only on the actual circles, and they wouldn't even let us do that. It had to be on a parcel of this size when we did it. So we didn't have an option to just have it as the area, because that's what we tried to do, because we wanted to be able to make sure we could clean these things up, but, uh, it wasn't an option at that time as well. But that's, you know, I, 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 I don't see any issues with this other than the cost, you know.
Again, just so I'm clear, the triangulated area, southwest corner of our Lot A, is, is, that, that land is gonna be transferred to the area to the east? That's somewhat.
The longer strip. Yeah.
Okay.
And I just kind of roughed that out, so it might not be, I'm sure it might be a better engineer than myself. Thirty-two thousand square feet of, thirty-two thousand four hundred square feet that we need to move.
John?
I think it's important to realize this is, both parcels are still yours, the cities. It's just one has a deed restriction and one doesn't.
We're swapping the dees?
Yeah.
We're reconfiguring Lot A for the deed restriction.
Well, we're not, we're not actually moving the deed, if Lot A will still have a deed restriction on it, we're just gonna move the dirt, right?
We'll have to replant Lot A to take out that southwest corner and add that other portion, that long strip. So we'll have to reconfigure Lot A for the deed restriction.
So that's, so it's, so it's not, so this is reconfiguring the deed restriction so they can do work in that area.
Yes, yes.
This isn't giving permission to work within the deed restriction area.
Right.
I see.
Yeah, because they won't allow them to work in the deed restriction.
So we're in the deed restricted areas, so we can do whatever we want in that southwest corner.
Exactly.
I get it. But as you, now, I think you mentioned it in your notes, I'm not finding it currently, but that becomes landlocked. That triangulated piece of, of soil.
Yeah, so that's.
Is all yours. It, yeah, but it become, well, no, it doesn't become landlocked, we still have access to it from the east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do wanna think about, you know, so basically, we're reconfiguring, we got this triangle corner down in there, you know. I just hope, you know, when they grade in there, so that's still become, that's still city ground. Who's gonna take care of that area? Because we probably won't go back there and mow in that, and I just wanna make sure that's okay with the homeowners, whatnot, because we don't mow any of that area, it's just natural grass area.
We can access it now from the east because of the improvements on Mickelson that extend actually to the property line of.
Yeah.
The rest, property owner, correct?
Yeah, we can access it, but we probably won't go back there and mow it. Just so everybody's aware of that.
As far as what Teresa's saying, I, I didn't speak with a homeowner, we have one here, but I'm assuming they'd rather go to wild grass just like it is.
And, and that's what I'm saying, as long as they're okay with having the wild grass there, yeah.
I mean, could, can I bring something up? Because hypothetically, in the future, there's gonna be a road to the east that ties on Railroad Street. Why, why would we, why would we include in deed restricted land, in land that's gonna butt that in the future road?
Well, a portion of it already upsets that.
Make it fatter and not so long.
Well, a portion of it does not right now. Well, I should, yeah, it does on Lot A.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
That, that northeast corner, but why would we add to that? Why would we take more land out of the equation if we can't do anything when it's going to butt a future road?
Yeah, that's a consideration.
So your preference would be to belly it, gorge it to the middle.
Right in the south center.
Put it, put it right in the south center.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to butt there.
Right here.
Right here, yeah. Why, why, why would we mess around and go by this road?
Yeah.
Why not just get all our crews right there?
Right here, why don't you stop it out?
Yeah, and this is just one proposal, but you could be, I'm not.
Let that go.
Put it up against the road.
Because you know what's gonna happen, in twenty years, somebody's gonna say, hey, I wanna do something here, but these idiots back in two thousand and eighteen moved this deed restriction here.
Now we can't do it.
Now we can't do it.
Right?
You know, we're gonna put a gas station right there, or a Piggly Wiggly, or a whatever.
Seven-Eleven. They might be back. They might be back.
Amazon headquarters.
Yeah, yeah.
He's just, tell me where I go, tell them where I'm going wrong.
No, you're, that's actually a comment, and I just asked John if we could actually, the triangle, the triangle piece of property that he's looking at transferring over from the deed restriction to the other non-deed restricted area, we can minimize the size of that also. And I would suggest we don't back it up against the right of way.
Right. You're starting something just like me now. And I didn't go to college. Perfect. Me too. I got there a lot cheaper than you did.
So, I think what we need right now though is just a motion to allow them to start moving forward with this. We don't have to straddle the exact boundary area, but I think they got a flavor of what.
Make a motion to allow city staff to work with developer to reallocate deed restricted land. Uh, for Lot A.
I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a maximum fig- figure as far as cost to the city.
With a limitation on, uh, cost to the city of five thousand dollars.
Exactly, that's a good job.
Okay, did you get all that?
We got a motion, we gotta wait a minute, let me see if we got a second?
Second.
Okay.
Could I have one, Governor? I think they should, uh, I think it should be required that it gets reseeded, anything that's served gets reseeded. I think that's what Teresa was getting at, is we just don't wanna be going there grading and hope it comes back to native grasses.
So.
We want it seeded back.
Yeah.
Assume you were doing.
Yeah.
The, the details of what happens, we trust you college educated folks. I have, I have one other question. It's, it's all, it's all well together, Mr. Jardy wants to get on there and move the dirt. But is that gonna be a problem with, uh, quote unquote, private contractor move the dirt on city land?
Well, it's a bed limit, so we can let anybody.
I, I, I'm just asking, I'm just asking out loud if, you know, if, uh, if a general contractor can just go in and donate earth moving on city property? Counselor says okay.
Counselor says okay?
I don't, I don't see, and I have hope, but I don't see it happening this fall. I mean, this, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, I was curious.
First thing is we gotta get permission from the Corps. We gotta follow all the requirements, send that into them, get their permission, and then we can move forward with it.
Exactly.
So, I just wanna make sure. We always talk about precedent, is this an issue that by doing this, are we gonna have somebody else asking the same question at some point? Do we have any other situations like this?
This is the only restricted deed area we have. This is kind of a unique circumstance, yeah.
Because we always have that question.
Right.
If we do something like this, are we causing a?
Right.
What my concern is, is that we have an agreement that says he's gonna do it, and if he starts it, then he completes it. And then if he doesn't complete it, he's responsible for us to, pay us to complete it.
Okay. And then we'll come together at some point once we get approval.
Yep.
First, I did.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So the problem's nothing. They, they are making her upgrade.
Review P and Z recommendation, change building permit valuation. Alright, we got some changes in there.
Yeah. So over the last couple of months, P and Z Board have just been reviewing our building permit fees, um, valuations we put on projects, and what we charge for building permits, and what we charge for additional fees like the hookups. Reviewing this because as it's been done since two thousand and nine, is about time to, you know, see if we're aligned with other communities. So, um, when we do a building permit, basically it's a two-step process. First of all, we figure a value for a project they're doing, then based on that value, that dollar amount, then we charge so much, you know, for that value, and that's how we come up with the building permit fee. So, kind of first thing they looked at was the values that we are charging for projects. So say someone's going to build a new home, uh, basically, when they come in with their plans, uh, their floor plans, to me, it's a how much habitable? You know, how much space are you gonna finish off? So basically, that's your main floor, if you're gonna finish that all off. We come up with, you know, right now, a, a value of seventy-two dollars a square foot. And we figure that, and then are you gonna finish the basement or not? So there's so much for a finished ba- basement, so much for unfinished, there's so much for attached, for detached. So we add all those values together and come up with a value for the project, and then from that value, that dollar amount, then we go to, you know, our fee calculation schedule, and we figure out what the building permit fee is. So they reviewed all this, um, they are recommending the P and Z Board a change in the valuation that we put on projects. Um, I put these in your packet, that's that first, uh, piece of paper you have there, which is, you know, a value per square foot. You know, it shows what we currently are charging. They are recommending the P and Z Board that we follow. You know, it shows what we currently are charging, they are recommending the P and Z Board that we follow Harrisburg's valuation. Basically, we wanna bring them up to more of the high end, so we're, we're kind of in line with how projects are going. And, um, everything is the same with Harrisburg's, except for that remodel area, they wanna make that thirty dollars a square foot. With commercial building permits, right now, somebody comes in for a commercial building, they're gonna bring me a bid price of what that building's gonna cost, you know. We're gonna go off of that, and ninety-nine percent of the time, that's what they got. Every once in a while, you'll get Joe Schmull that comes in, hey, I'm gonna do this all myself, and I don't know, I'm gonna, don't know what my labor's gonna cost, or whatever it may be. If they don't got a value, right now, we charge them forty dollars a square foot, and they'd like to change that to eighty, just to make it high enough where, hey, if you're gonna do a commercial project, go get bids from contractors, you know, get a, you know, real dollar amount forward here.
They're gonna save a couple grand on the building permit, but they're probably hiring a contractor anyways.
Exactly, they're gonna be hiring a contractor anyway, so, yeah, exactly right. I do know when I was calling around getting all these figures from other communities, um, Del Rapids, Brandon, um, Lennox, and, um, what was that, OT, when they went, they wanted, they hadn't changed their fee schedule for quite a while, so they wanna know what we come up with, because they're looking at raising theirs as well, too, a lot of them are just looking at that right now.
We still have a part, part fee, don't we, on our building permits?
Yep, yep, that's part of the building calculation, we charge that building permit fee.
Oh, yeah, it is, there.
And the real part fee. So they're, the So they are recommending the change to this evaluation schedule, which, you know, that's just putting the dollar amount on the project, so upping these a little bit is a it's not gonna make any big cost changes, you know, of course, the bigger the project, the bigger the cost changes, but, you know, it's not gonna make a significant change, but it's gonna make us more in line with kind of the higher end, the Harrisburg, the Sioux Falls, you know, what other cities are gonna be charging here in the future. So they suggest changing that, but then our, um, fee schedule, they suggest keeping that same, because we did a lot of calculations. Say we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, and, you know, what would it cost us here, what it would cost us in Brandon, whatnot, what if we have a two hundred, I mean, we kinda stretched all those numbers, and really, we're pretty comparable with them, so they're, they're suggesting no changes from that.
Doesn't get any cheaper from the city. Make a motion to approve the, uh, building permit valuation schedule as proposed.
Second. Discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yep.
And Jones?
Yes.
Tell P and Z, thanks for doing all that work, and thank you to you for all that background work, that's all.
Yeah, they've, they've been working on it and talking about it quite a bit, I said, well, should be set for a while, not here again before we have to review it again.
Right, well, that's good, I like it. All right, next one we have is discuss possible changes from municipal ordinance four thirty, that's dynamic braking or brake braking. Maybe just a verbiage upgrade, so that the state will allow us to get updated signs, right?
Yeah.
Just say, hey, we gotta get word of this one.
So right now, we have signs, you know, coming in town, we got them on Colton Road, Highway thirty-eight coming in, Western, you know, you can't use dynamic braking. And, um, and this has come out from the South Dakota DOT, basically, they're stating that we have to have this verbiage. Unmuffled dynamic engine braking is prohibited, that's the exact verbiage we have to have in our ordinance for them to go ahead and replace any signs, um, for any city. We have just, you know, dynamic braking, you know, was our previous one, well, we've gotta put this verbiage in, like I said, allow us to replace the signs in the future when ours get wore out. If we don't change it, the signs we have now can stay in place, but once they wear out, they won't let us put new signs back up, so, um.
Our resident expert left, but I make a motion to approve the changes to municipal ordinance four thirty.
Second.
Before we vote on that motion, I'd like you to look at how it reads in the second sense, and it goes unmuffled dynamic engine braking is prohibited, except for the aversion of imminent danger is prohibited, and I think you should have a period at the end of danger and strike is prohibited after it.
I agree with that.
So I think the first, I think the first motion should be that, um, the proposed language be changed, as I suggested, and then the second motion would be to give first reading, as amended.
Yeah, what our councilor said.
I do wanna say, Mark, um, Montan's, he drives truck, he did call me about this, and just so you're aware, um, unmuffled dynamic braking, you'll still have a sound, you know, I, you know, it's not that you can't use your, you know, engine brake, brake. He says it's allowed to, you know, there, there's muffled and unmuffled, unmuffled will still be a sound, so just for clarification, you know, it doesn't actually prohibit it completely, yeah, so, by doing this. Okay.
So for the record, you want your motion to be amended to say exactly what Mr. Nelson said.
Correct, but a little period after danger, strike is prohibited.
Yeah, a, a, and to just clarify a little more, this isn't first reading, this is just for discussion, so I will change it, and I'll come to the next meeting for first reading, so.
I think I knew that subconsciously.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, that's why, yeah.
All right. Sounds good, you good with all that, Jones?
Yeah, I'm perfect with that, I am, I'm perfect.
You have any more discussion we'll vote? Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yep.
Keel? Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Gotta make sure.
It's gonna be a.
All right. Best possible changes to ordinance four thirty, chap final, chapter final one, I'll call it, just. All right.
Okay. So, as you know, the state did a lot of revisions to the liquor laws this last legislative session, and, um, we are in the process now of, uh, renewing the liquor licenses, they're gonna come before you at our next meeting, but, um, as we're reading through all the new laws, and we're comparing them with our ordinances, and what we have, there are two areas where we're in conflict with state law now, since they've done some changes. So the first one is the hours of sale. Um, right now, this, you know, we used to follow the state, they went on about selling on Christmas, Memorial Day, whatnot, we used to follow that, and that's what the state regulations were. Now with the changes, the state changed it that basically you can sell alcohol three hundred and sixty-five days a week from seven AM to two AM every single day. They don't restrict holiday, they don't restrict, you know, besides these hours, you know, that's up to the establishment that we want to have. Now cities, we can be more restrictive if we want to, we can keep ours the same if we wanna be, or we can change it around, I mean, we can be more restrictive than the state, but just so you're aware, the state has made this change, and I think we should consider maybe following the state, just because it's gonna be confusing for the license holders in town, it's gonna be confusing for the sheriff's department, okay, what regulation, what's, what's the city one, what's the state one, or whatnot. For consistency, it might be good to consider following the state verbiage, but that's up to you guys.
I know I'm not an expert in this field, but it seems like it would be restrictive, it would hinder their employment opportunities, or it would put additional burden on them.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
They still have the rights.
Should be more.
Yeah, I mean, they can set their own hours for their establishment, whatever they want, but this is just what we would allow.
I think of those times at, uh, Sunshine where, you know, you got, somebody has to come over and check you out, you know, so.
And, and that's kind of more the next thing about the age of sale, but, yeah, yeah, that's definitely, yeah. But this is just for the hours of sale of what we want. Like I said, right now, we, we don't lock Christmas days, um, on town, all sales a little bit different, it's, it's a little bit confusing. But as we're, you know, now that the liquor licenses are coming up for renewal, if, if we're gonna be different than the state, we wanna make sure we get that information out to them, so they have the correct information, yeah.
We'll have to have first and second reading on this as well, if we take this.
Yes, yes, because these are just for discussion, I haven't drafted an ordinance yet, so, just want council input of what you would like.
It's all the same ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah.
I recommend we follow state guidelines for the hours of sale.
And days.
And days, hours and days.
As proposed.
Second.
Be a motion, or just?
If you wanna make a motion to draft an ordinance to follow us, that would be great.
Make a motion to draft ordinance to amend ordinance four thirty to follow state guidelines for hours and days of operation for alcohol, alcoholic beverage sales.
There you go. Real second?
Yes.
Five point oh one, the chapter.
But they're both ordinance four thirty, you know, maybe they're.
Well, just do ordinance four thirty.
They're both five point, ordinance four thirty.
All right, I think that gives her enough direction, we're even back municipal breakings and ordinance one thirty also. Different chapter.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The different chapter, yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson? Nelson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yep.
And Jones?
Yep.
Okay, so then the other portion of this with the alcohol changes is the age of sale, you're kind of referring to that trap I said. Right now, our ordinance says, um, you know, eighteen to twenty-year-olds, um, can sell alcohol if the businesses, fifty percent of it is, of their, um, gross profits is from alcohol. So basically, you know, they gotta be like a grocery store, or something that gets more sales from non-alcoholic beverages, so, um, like I said, you can be eighteen, twenty years old and sell it, as long as there's a twenty-one-year-old on the premises. So like when you go to the grocery store now, like Sunshine, you got a young checker, that twenty-one-year-old has to come over and help you check it out, because our ordinance reads, you gotta have both those, you know, items in place. The state has changes, you can either have, they put in, instead of an and in there, they put an or in there. So, say, um, Sunshine, what made a good example, was say you like, um, a gas station that, you know, just has beer sales, so, you know, most of their sales is from gas and other items in there, and say you only got a twenty-year-old manager there, that manager could actually check out, if they're eighteen or twenty years old, they could check out without having that twenty-one-year-old be there. Or they could have a twenty-one-year-old there with all these younger kids, they, it, it's either or, so they added that or in there. So, once again, the question is, do we wanna follow state guideline, which I think we need to in this case, be just to, like I said, so everything is the same, or stick with ours.
See, I look at like you got Coffee Cup, and they've got, they've got locations in different municipalities, most of those are gonna be following state guidelines. If we're different, they've gotta jump through hoops to make sure those stores operate different.
A little more confusing.
I think we follow state.
Yeah, same with our, uh, our deputies, they've got multiple communities that they, uh, report to, and so, yes, there are issues. Should eliminate some.
Just less confusing and keep everything consistent with the state.
As far as the age thing is, if they're gonna go out the back door, it's gonna go out the back door anyway. I don't think this ordinance really affects that one way or another, but it does make it easier, because I know Coffee Cup has a night manager now that's nineteen, twenty years old. And she's a very responsible per individual to be able to do that, you know, why, you know, why restrict the nighttime sales of beer? Because there's no twenty-one-year-old on side.
Right.
And maybe that's what the state was thinking, too, I guess.
Yeah, the labor market's pretty tight.
It is?
So this is five point, five point oh one? Okay.
It's the same chapter, this is our alcohol beverage chapter, I'll come to you with an actual ordinance change.
Motion to approve the age restriction set forth by the state of South Dakota in chapter five point oh one.
Second.
And tweak it however you want to.
Motion second, discussion question starts. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yep.
And Jones?
Yep.
We're rolling now.
All right, surplus coverage. In our packet, any questions about any of that that's in there?
My only question is, um, do we recycle our computers or is trash them?
Yeah, well, we can just trash them, we have to take them to a recycling.
That was in the details, it's just trash.
That's true, that's true, we're, we're gonna get rid of them. But yes, we'll have to go to a licensed recycle.
And what auction is?
That's what I was gonna say.
Stifels is the one I think he's been talking with as far as the timeline of getting it on their auction site, because they handle municipal equipment.
Did I understand that, uh, John Deere wants to, are they gonna buy it at auction or buy it before auction?
No, they'll have to buy it at auction.
At auction.
Um, Craig's been in contact with them, and I know they'll be at this auction when it's set.
They want buyers.
They, they wanna buy it.
Why wouldn't we do a surplus bid in August? Take still bids.
I mean, you're kind of doing it, trying to do the same thing both ways, because at an auction, you'll guarantee that minimum from John Deere, I mean, but if you have another, other bidders on it, you know, it may rise on that, so, I mean.
Sure.
You get bids through an auction, or you, we can do a still bid with us, too. The auction, you may have more of a scope of people that are looking at that versus us just advertising it. They might hit a wider target area, we might get better bids, is what we found in the past to happen.
And we'll pay for a commission.
Right.
Um, I'd have to look on that for sure, three or four percent, something like that.
Three or four?
Yeah, something like that.
I bet it's more than that, I bet six, I, I bet it's minimum six on most of the guys.
Yeah, I, I don't know, usually, you know, Craig works, they're not with that.
Same, wanna use your backhoe. To sell it.
Is it, is it less work? I mean, is it, is it just less headache for the city to just take?
Oh, it's less, yeah, I, I mean, it is less work, because we don't have to type up still bids, we don't have to do that advertising.
They'll do the advertising for us.
But they do the advertise, like I said, they kind of hit a wider market than what we usually hit, you know, like.
Oh, you have a minimum bid?
Yes, and we have that trade in value that adds our minimum bid, and we've already discussed that with them, so.
What do you need, a motion? Go ahead.
Motion to surplus these items as presented, yeah?
Yep, I make a motion to surplus the items as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Make sure you don't trash the computers in the second.
Yeah.
All right, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And the pool committee dissolved, because of, because of the news complaint.
Yeah, so basically, a lot of this is just FYI, the pool committee is no longer the pool committee, because they did not, uh, renew their, um, paperwork with the state and pay their fees to renew it, and this all happened without us even knowing about it, you know, we found out after the fact. Had we had known beforehand, we could have done like we did with the Dry to Revive, and just put it on an inactive status, where it still keeps the five oh one C three intact, and then we can just reactivate it when we wanna, pay that fee to reactivate it. Now, in order to have a committee, then you would have to pay all those fees, you'd have to establish a new five oh one C three, so. At this point, they're not meeting, and they don't have any plans for future meetings, so at this point, they're dissolved, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. Um, I did ask them to bring all their records here to City Hall, so we can have those on file, and they do have their, a, a separate bank account that they had, that where they had different fundraisers, they used that money, essentially, it was raised for the pool, so they, um, actually, I just got the check today, they're bringing that to the city, so it's about fourteen hundred dollars. So, we have fourteen hundred dollars for pool donations that came through them, we have about nineteen hundred sitting in our own, you know, pool committee fund. Basically, I need a motion just to take those pool funds and put them into the general, because the pool fund does not exist anymore.
Why don't we put them into parks?
Well, it's part of the general.
Okay.
I mean, you can't put them into a specific area.
Just, uh, go that direction a little bit?
No. Okay. A- and it doesn't matter, so you put it into parks, at the end of the year, it's all gonna go away, you're gonna go with the new budget.
How many years ago did our auditor recommend, I'll just do away with that, put it on the general, was that like four, five years ago, six years ago?
Oh, with a couple of committees, yeah, 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 probably about that.
All right.
Motion to the, uh, how do you want this word?
Motion to take all the funds from the pool committee, whatever the check is, and move it to the general.
Apply to the general fund. There it is. So we lost that five oh one C three.
Yep.
Which is too bad, because a lot of work goes into that.
Mm-hmm.
And they're worth, they're worth, um, um, so, I guess, we'll take the vote, call, call the vote, we will...
Do we have a second?
Maybe a second.
Second. Discussion? Keel?
Absolutely.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yep.
And Jones?
Yes.
In the moment, Jesse's been waiting for...
Man, I tell you what, Jesse's been so...
I just wanna add more tax related to your books.
Yes, it's been saying to your friends, ringing the bell hard, I love...
That's all I care about.
Why so blue, Jesse, why so blue?
Why so blue? I'm pretty red today, if you know what I mean, so...
Ooh, nice one.
Late night, late night. Anyways, the proposal's in your, in your packet here, I'll spare you the time, given that it's nine thirty, to go any, any other details, but, you know, we've been working on this since March. Uh, we'd love to have this in front of you in September, if not June, but it's not the way this project's worked out at this point. Um, we wanna move forward, but are, are, we have a few hurdles in, in place. So this is one of those hurdles, we don't have the land. And so before we, we move on to the next path, which would be, either A, finding investors, or B, creating a investment group, we need to secure the land and then file a CLOMAR, I believe is the technical term, to bring it onto the Fug Lane. So that's a wrap.
What are you asking, Jesse?
I'm asking to transfer this land to the Harper Air Development Corporation for one dollar.
Similar to what we did with the three lots that the, of where the brewery's set on, correct?
Correct, it's opening on Saturday at one forty-five PM, Thursday night.
Do you want, do you need the terminology for future, I wanna say RFI, I'm not correct there?
You know, I'll just make a motion to transfer the lots to the HADC for one dollar. Do you have a second?
I'll second it for discussion, go ahead, Scott.
I'd like to, I'd like to, so, public knows why, okay? Um, and that's why I was asking about that, I'm in total loss right now, it's not an RFI, it's what?
RFP.
RFP, RFP.
Well, if this motion would pass, I would love to call the project donors tomorrow morning, want to know what, we can announce this at our annual meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
And then make this public as possible, because the project donor's been itching to get this out to the public.
Again, since we're in discussion phase, I'm gonna ask the question. We kind of set the precedent when we gave the land to the brewery, correct?
Yeah.
So I mean, we're not, this is just another step of development in our city, correct?
It's always been that way.
So when existing daycares come to us and say, how come we didn't get that deal, they had that opportunity, correct?
Yep, we put it out for the public, we had about a thirty day, maybe longer than that window, we know that everybody in town and... Other than the three received, only one was from Harper.
Okay.
Where, I'm sorry, where is this at this time?
So this land?
Between, just a little bit further.
Right down here on, whatever that street is, south, south street.
There's actually a map in here, there's a map in here somewhere.
So that's where stepping stone wants to go?
That would be, in theory, you can't say it all, would you?
Oh, okay.
Boy, technically, you can, we just try it out.
Well, it would be an improvement, because I would like to do a strip mall daycare.
Yeah.
I'm gonna amend the motion, Mark, uh, to read, basically start up, say, the motion to, uh, uh, sell the land to the HADC.
Mark's got his motion. I've got my motion, he's got his motion.
Yeah, there is a motion and a second.
But listen, I wanna, I wanna clarify one thing quick.
I guess we'll talk about it.
This, so we got a motion, we got a second. It's to transfer the land to the HADC. HADC is looking at right now, working with a developer, an investor group, that would develop, put a building up there. We think a daycare would go in there, the daycare might stay there a year, it might stay there twenty years, but no matter what, it would get sold from the HADC to this development group to build a building on land that's not offering any tax base right now. So, I don't, I don't wanna get all caught in the weeds about, is it daycare, is it not? How long? That is why, my, that is why I left it open-ended. I agree with that. Because I want the development corporation to have the land and make something happen with it. We've invested in putting dirt on it.
Right.
To develop it, so, if this is a hurdle to get it out of our name into theirs, then let's do it, be done.
Right.
I know when we transfer the H, uh, the land for the, you know, on Main Street, for, for, what was it?
One year.
One year, have, have to have a building permit, hold within one.
Hold within one year.
Otherwise, the land comes back to the state. That's just to, you know, kinda make sure that the ball keeps rolling, but I don't know, in this case, if it matters, but...
I think their, the difference was you had somebody ready to put it right on it. Yeah. Here, we're asking a prospective investor to speculate on us approving it. So now, if we can get it approved, then they can go, okay, I want to invest in it, so...
We put no stipulations on it, though, considering the HADC's...
Right. Give some flexibility to do more stuff if this goes through.
Yep, absolutely. What is the, what's the value of this, do you know? It's not worth anything, we don't have anything on it, right?
No, we're not generating any tax revenue.
Right, so it's really, I mean, it's just sitting there right now with nice dirt and grass on it.
And we're not prescribing a price for the HADC to sell it. We're not saying give it away, we're not saying sell it for so and so, we're saying, we're transferring it.
It's clearly worthless, because you can't build anything on it until the CLOMAR's filed, correct?
I agree with all that.
We think post...
Counselor, does, does an RFP need to be mentioned in this, just for clarity?
Father, you can do anything you want.
Well, I'm just saying, just to, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight this, but, uh...
I think if for some reason they don't get investor and this doesn't happen, it gives them, by not putting that on, it gives them other options to do, bring something else in and use that land for it, too.
Thank you.
I mean, I just think, if I transfer it to it, like Mark said, they can work forward this, if something doesn't come through on this, they can maybe work on another project with getting something on that land, so...
I move the whole vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman? Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
On behalf of the HADC, thank you.
Can I comment? You have to vote. This is why we have a full-time economic relevant director we need to use here, and he's gonna make stuff like this happen, we gotta give him the tools, correct, Jesse?
I would agree.
So you have the tools.
Thank you.
All right, the last item on the agenda, unless we have executive section, do you have any, do you want any executive section?
No, I'm not getting it.
All right, is, Jesse would like to see a thank you account from the city council to the Harper Community Foundation Library for, for the grants that they put in place for the library and stuff like that.
Yes, we received a thousand dollar grant from Sioux Valley Energy and then, I believe, three thousand from the community foundation, so four thousand dollars towards the library project.
Could you write that first, assign it?
I'm off my handwriting, it's, and I was, well, can't, can't read it. Yeah, I, I would write it, I can, but might, might be better going from the city council writing it than me.
I can.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what is the thank you letter?
It's for their, their grant for the library.
The library, like the city library?
The city library, next to us. Did you have that, yeah?
No, I was just at the library book fair at the elementary school, no, I wasn't with it.
I tell you that.
I...
Yep.
Here's what we'll do, though, I'm not gonna handwrite one up tonight, it's not well thought out, so, I'll type one, email it over, so we can put it on city letterhead, and we'll sign it after the next meeting.
That's great.
Boy, that there are...
Keel?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There you go.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.